Call of meeting to order at 10 o'clock. Could it roll call, please?
Laura Weigand here.
Dolores Blackburn here.
Bill Stram here.
Elise McMath here.
We have a quorum. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody's had an opportunity to review the agenda. Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The new business, the first item on our agenda this morning is an application from Greg and Emily Gentry appealing the decision from the zoning administrator dated February 4th, 2025, which provided a zoning determination considering 542 Jefferson Avenue that stated the accessory building is illegal nonconforming use as an accessory dwelling unit, also known as ADU, and short-term rentals are not permissible to the ADU, and this lot does not have two principal houses but a main house and an accessory dwelling unit.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to refresh a few items through this process. So again, this is an appeal, not a variance application. An appeal is different. There was a zoning decision that was issued on this property to the Gentrys, and they are appealing that decision. And a reminder to both the Board and to the public at large, when an appeal of a zoning decision is filed, the decision on such appeal shall be based on the Board's judgment of whether the administrative officer was correct. The determination of the administrative officer shall be presumed to be correct. At a hearing on an appeal, the administrative officer shall explain the basis for his determination, after which the appellant has the burden of proof to rebut such presumption of correctness by preponderance of the evidence. And again, that is pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2309. So you have received a copy with the appeal application from the Gentrys of the entire zoning determination letter that I issued on February 4th, 2025, to the Gentrys. I'm happy to walk through any of that component. I just want to go over some of the highlights because this is a complicated piece of property in which much has happened on it over the years. This came about when the Gentrys approached the town to apply for a business license for short-term rental for the accessory dwelling unit on this lot, as well as applying for rental inspection for the accessory dwelling unit. It was my understanding at that time that both these applications were not processed due to a denial of my zoning clearance for the short-term rental in the ADU. One of the things that is of note, they listed on their application an address of 509 Nectarine Street, and part of that, they had indicated to me that they were seeking a short-term rental license and inspection for the accessory dwelling unit at that address. The town doesn't actually have that address for that property. That is really not the crux of today, but it became one of the issues that we felt relevant to address in the zoning letter. So moving forward, I did do an extensive amount of research to understand the history of this property because, as you may recall, not because it was a matter before this Board, but because it was of some public note, there had been an ongoing renovation project at this address of actually 524, 542 Jefferson Avenue, and through different owners. These were not the Gentrys whatsoever. It was the prior owners, the Doherty's, who owned this property under Bad Dog Investments LLC. They were working through a renovation project, and their contractor demolished the entire structure. And that was of note when that occurred in now three years ago, four years ago. We ended up doing an enforcement action on this property for them to restore the demolished home. And so, yes, that has been an ongoing process. Even though the property has now been sold, the violation is still being pursued, and the main structure is being reconstructed under those orders. With that said, we do recognize that there has been an accessory structure on this property as well for many, many years. And so with that, we wanted to make sure we had a full understanding of what happened, how that structure came about, approximately the age or what time it happened. It was difficult. I do know I've seen evidence of it on prior fire insurance maps from the 40s and 50s that showed that there were two structures on this. So I think for a long time, there's always been some sort of accessory structure on this property. So most recently, we did go back through to 2017, when this changed hands from Marie Godwin King over to Thomas G. Godwin Sr., and he received that property as a deed of gift. And at that time, the town did acknowledge when that transfer happened because they came in for some building permits. There was an acknowledgement that there was a principal residence on the property, as well as an accessory structure, and that both of these were present prior to the zoning ordinance, when the town adopted a zoning ordinance, which was July 14th of 1992. When we did adopt its first zoning ordinance, in that zoning ordinance, we include a residential dash one zoning district, which this property sits within, and the permitted uses contained in that zoning district include single-family dwellings and accessory buildings, but there was no allowance for accessory dwelling units, as well as short-term rentals in that 1992 zoning ordinance. I did want to strike or highlight to you, within the zoning ordinance from its inception, there is a section called the nonconforming uses, Section 2.5, which really is the provision to allow for uses that were there before we ever had zoning and kind of to grandfather them in, I think is the frequent term people use when we call them legal nonconforming uses. And that is how we would designate the accessory structure on this property. After we did our research and discovered that it had been used for long-term rental purposes up to that point, and so we totally concur that it has been used and has a history of being used as a accessory dwelling unit, even though the town did not include that terminology in its first zoning ordinance. We gave you all the provisions contained in that legal nonconforming statute, which talks with everything from whether it can ever be expanded or not expanded, grown in size, or if it should fall out as a use or structure for a period of time, which is a two-year statutory limitation. And if that fails to continue to be used consecutively for those two years, then that use would expire as well. Our building official, I don't see him here yet.
He's over there.
Oh, there's Jeb, I'm sorry. Our building official has provided me some information in the letter that was sent out on this, that according to his knowledge and recollection in his position with the town, that the accessory structure at this property was used as a long-term rental prior to Mr. Godwin's ownership of the parcel and continued in that fashion after he received that property. And so at some point, I would like to request that Mr. Brady be given the opportunity to put that onto the record officially. So we totally acknowledge at this point, and I have issued under this zoning determination letter, that a long-term rental unit has been occurring in the accessory building, and while it was not a permitted use by right, it is still a legal nonconforming use under the statute, under our zoning ordinance, and can continue as such. Mr. Godwin eventually sold hit that property again in December of 2018 to Bad Dog Investments LLC, David and Elizabeth Doherty. And at that time, the Doherty's applied to the town and received a building permit to renovate the accessory structure, and they did. And I've provided you that information in that zoning determination letter. I do find that our provision of the ordinance was not exactly adhered to during the issuance of that building permit for that zoning approval. But again, I find that there was tacit government approval at that point in time, so we have to accept those decisions issued by those town officials at that time when the accessory building was being renovated. It still is an accessory building and continues as a long-term rental dwelling unit under the Doherty's. As I mentioned, in the zoning determination letter, the first time town council considered adding accessory dwelling units to the zoning ordinance was in November of 2018, specifically November 1 of 2018, and they adopted an ordinance, and they actually had a delayed implementation date of that they made it effective February 1 of 2019. And again, that was provided. So within that, they contemplated that there was a potential that these accessory dwelling units could have separate water meter services to its facility, because again, the town is providing water and sewer facility services at that point in time. But at that time in 2018, there was no language that dealt with short-term rentals within an ADU. That's not surprising because again, this town really was not focused on the terminology of short-term rentals. I truly think that is a terminology and industry that took off subsequent to 2018, specifically during the COVID years and definitely in the rise of certain industries of Airbnb, VRBO, and other online platforms that made those sorts of entities more known throughout the community and as a vacation housing choice. And so it spread into our community after that timeframe. So I'm not surprised it wasn't in the ordinance. I would have been surprised if it had been listed in the ordinance. We would have been ahead of the game, which unusual. So with that said, again, we still don't feel that the STR had occurred historically on this lot, and it is not a covered use in the legal nonconforming section of the zoning ordinance. The town did do a further renovation of their ADU ordinance, so I will come to that here in a second. As I mentioned previously, the Doherty's had been doing renovations on the main house. There is a long history, I detailed about that in this zoning determination letter. During their renovation, they lived in the accessory dwelling unit, so they were not renting it as an STR. They were residing in the accessory dwelling unit for the renovation of the principal As I mentioned, the town council did another amendment to the ADU ordinance. They did that in October of 2022 relative to ADUs. And specifically, one of the primary issues that we addressed at that time is when the ADU ordinance first came into being, it required a conditional use permit. And there were some other clauses and criteria that had to be met as part of that process, but it required a public hearing process through the planning commission and the town council to receive a conditional use permit. After four years of that occurring in this community, I did approach both the town council and the planning commission about changing that manner in which you obtain an ADU approval. I felt nothing was being gained from the public hearing process. If we felt there were additional criteria that should be applicable to the ADUs in both their size, use, and limitations, we should write those characteristics out into our ordinance and allow it to be a by right use, which is exactly what happened. The town council and planning commission made those changes and put that forward to a public hearing process and amended the zoning ordinance to take out ADUs being a conditional use permit and to actually be a by right use as long as the criteria were all met, that are detailed in our zoning ordinance now. So again, that still has not detailed or changed the ADUs for being allowed to be used as STRs. And in fact, by then, this community was in full conversation about STRs in October of 2022. And specifically, the town council and the planning commission included language in that revision to specifically prohibit STRs from being allowed in accessory dwelling units. The reason they did that is accessory dwelling units were added to the zoning ordinance in 2018 to provide another housing choice in this community, specifically trying to help solve the rental market of long-term rentals not happening in this community with the rising prices of the homes going on at that time. The council was concerned that anybody who was working here in Cape Charles and just were trying to rent a house for four months, six months, three months, there were no options available. And so this was felt to be a way of trying to provide or fill that void in our marketplace, provide some additional income for the property owners, but not being too much of a strain on our infrastructure of water and sewer or on the housing market as a whole. So I just wanted to give you that little background history as to why ADUs were allowed into the ordinance in the first place, and then when it was amended subsequently in 2022, why they specifically prohibited STRs from being a part of ADUs. With that said, this property sold in May of 2024 from the Doherty's to the Gentrys. And at that time, the town staff met with the Gentrys, made them aware of all the issues associated with this property, the violation that was still going on, the required renovation and rehabilitation of the principal structure and the accessory dwelling unit and its use. And so with that said, they've continued to express their desire, that they wish to use the ADU for STR purposes, and they are displeased with the decision that has come out from my office, and such they are appealing that to you at this point in time. I did want to touch base on the last issue I referenced at the very beginning relative to this additional address that is on the property. It was never a town-issued address. It's not recognized by the town. It is not recognized by the county. It's not on any of their property records from a billing perspective, from the county assessment or tax billing piece of paperwork, nor is it on our billing records from our tax records for this piece of property either. I'm not saying that they didn't, meaning not the Gentrys, that probably was the Doherty's or maybe even somebody before then, that went to the post office and said, "We'd like to get mail and packages delivered to this particular building. Can we get an address?" And that, I can actually see, that's a reasonable thing that the post office would have said, "Here's the address, and we will deliver mail over here." But that does not give it any particular zoning protections with that addressing, just so you're aware of that. So with the appeal that they have now filed, they specifically stated that they would like to have actually two structures be deemed principal residences on this property. And my position is that is not something that can be approved under our zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance in the R1 district requires a minimum lot size of 5,600 square feet for one single-family home. So there is not 5,600 times two at this property to have two principal homes there, period. You cannot subdivide it. Our ordinance does not allow this lot to be subdivided. And again, I've provided you the sections in our zoning ordinance that prohibit a subdivision of an R1 lot that's 5,600 square feet, which is the minimum requirement. And I've also provided you both our ADU ordinance, as it reads today, as well as our STR ordinance, which was recently adopted by the town council, first in November of 2024, and subsequently amended again in December of 2024, that talks about the provisions that allow for STRs across the board. So this does not meet the requirement to have an STR because it is an accessory dwelling unit. The principal house, when the construction is finished, can absolutely have STRs in it, but the ADU building cannot have an STR. So I will stop there. I think that summarizes everything. I know there was a lot of paperwork associated with this application. I gave you all the attachments, and I'm happy to discuss it any further when it is time for this Board to ask further questions of the staff. But with that said, I would like to ask our building official to come in and testify as well, if he may, about his history and knowledge of this property, specifically the accessory dwelling unit.
That's fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jeb Brady. I'm the building official for the town of Cape Charles. Been with the town since 2005. Been the building official since 2011. To my knowledge, the property has never been used for short-term rental, only long-term rental use, and that was prior to Bad Dog Investments renovating the property. Once they renovated the accessory dwelling unit, they were the only ones to reside in it. Any questions for me?
No.
I have a question.
Sure.
So when they renovated the building...
Elise, can you speak up? Sorry.
Sorry. When they renovated the building, it went from how many bedrooms to how many bedrooms?
I can't, yeah, I can't answer that without looking into the files.
Okay.
I do know it went from a one-story building to a two-story building. I can give you that accurate information.
Was there an increase in bathrooms at all, do you know?
Yeah, not off the top of my head, and I don't want to spit something that's not completely accurate information.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jeb? Please.
No.
Thank you. Moving along, we're not going to open this up to the public. Do you want to read the statement?
The public hearing?
Not the public hearing so much as, do you want to read the statements from people who have sent them in, emailed them in first?
Actually, no, I'd like to take any testimony from those in attendance, but again, we need to hear from the applicant first.
Okay.
And I do know they have an attorney representing them, but I think both the applicant and the attorney are both going to speak at this point.
Okay.
And Chris Pakta is their attorney.
Some handouts to spin it previously. Do you mind if I hand it out again?
Sure. No, please do, because I'm not providing...
Oh, terrific, okay.
Sure. Okay. I guess I should have got the clip on. I forgot how to do this. Is this two? Is this all one or two? Oh, it's a bunch of pictures. Okay. Let's see. And that is a different one. That's it? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, guys. What is it you just gave them?
I'm handing out what I've sent to Ms. Nunes previously. It's a collection of documents that I'm going to discuss in the presentation. Before I begin, I'd request, Ms. Nunes mentioned kind of the complexity and the history of this scenario. If I could request an additional four to five minutes, just so that my client, Ms. Gentry, can speak as well.
That's fine.
Okay.
Before we get started, could you please get your full name?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
And make sure you talk into the mic.
I will, yes. Yeah, good morning. So my name's Chris Pakta. I'm a land use and zoning attorney with Walcott Rivers Gates, and it's my pleasure to represent the applicants in this case, who are seated to my rights, Emily and Greg Gentry. And as Ms. Nunes mentioned, this is a unique situation. It's got a unique history, and it's rather complex. I'm going to run through some things, but I'm also going to mention the standard. One time, there was a piece of the standard for the Board of Zoning Appeals that I just wanted to mention. It's under the powers and duties section. It says, "In exercising its powers, the Board may reverse or affirm wholly or partly, or may modify any order, requirement, decision, or determination appealed from, or may decide in favor of the applicant on any matter which is required to effect any variance from the ordinance." So I think it's important for the public and everyone to be made aware of this standard. It's not an all or nothing approach. You could modify or uphold in part or in total the determination. So as we mentioned, it's a rather complex and lengthy history of the project, but what it boils down to is the Gentrys purchased this property in 2024 with the expectation and the understanding that they would have a short-term rental use of the cottage, and then the main house, which is being rebuilt, would operate eventually as their primary residence. I say eventually because right now and the previous owners used and used the cottage as their primary residence. In fact, it's the only residence being used. However, I think it's important for you all, and this is why I mentioned the standard, that you could uphold or modify in part the zoning determination, and I think should, based on four options, four alternatives that you have. Like I mentioned, it doesn't have to be an all or nothing approach. The first one is this. Ms. Nunes mentioned a legally nonconforming use. So she mentioned that because of the history of the property of the cottage as a long-term rental, as a rental, that it could be seen in her determination as legally nonconforming, and so could still exist in that way. What you're going to read is a letter there from a resident, actually from two residents, who will say that since 2015 that they've been at the property, they had observed this property being used as a short-term rental. So that's even with the onset of the 2018 ordinance or the 2022 ordinance. That's the letter that you're going to see from the Thornbrows. It's Kristen and John Thornbro. So prior to the 2022 zoning amendment, a cottage was used as a weekly or biweekly rental. This would allow it to be legally nonconforming, not just as a rental, but as a short-term rental. Then the Gentrys applied for a short-term rental application and obtained a business license from the town that said approval for operation as a short-term rental in the cottage. I bring that up because Ms. Nunes mentioned tacit government approval. And so what you're going to see throughout the history of this property is tacit government approval of short-term rental in the cottage, but also as being a separate address, 509 Nectarine. And then finally, they received a transient occupancy tax notification dated November 20th of 2024. So what you could do is rule to overturn the aspect of the zoning determination and simply modify it to say that the cottage is legally nonconforming, not just as a rental, but also as a short-term rental. The second thing you could do is you could recognize 509 to be a separate or secondary single-family dwelling. So this is what you're going to see evidenced by the photograph of the previous house, the previous cottage before it was rebuilt, with that address, 509 Nectarine. And then you're also going to see a building permit, actually, a series of building permits issued with that same address. That's tacit government approval. Separate water, separate electricity, photo with the separate address, and US mail going to that address. And I think finally, I mean, I know it's sort of common sense to us, but it's the only house used. You can't have an accessory dwelling without a dwelling. The cottage is the only dwelling on the property at the moment. Next, I think this is significant. You could find that there's precedent for this thing, what we're looking to do here, which is have a short-term rental on the back of this property and it being at the intersection in that same historic district. So two blocks down, this is what you're going to see in that photograph with the light blue siding. This is a beautiful house, actually, two beautiful homes, at 554 Madison and 409 Nectarine. So at some point in the past, there is an official record of this. It appears that there was a line drawn, if you will, in the middle of that property, same exact size as my client's property. And there's a short-term rental in the back, and then there's a residence in the front, short-term rental on Nectarine, not on Madison. That's precisely what we're looking to do here as well, the smaller house being used as the short-term rental. And I think finally, what you can do here, if you decide that none of those three are the ways in which you want to modify the order or uphold the appeal and overturn the zoning administrator, is based on the ordinance itself. So the result of upholding the zoning administrator on this point, on the short-term rental, but then also as the cottage being an accessory dwelling unit not allowing a short-term rental, is that it's inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. So R1 zoning, the code says that it's to be a suitable environment for family life, promote convenient, active, and a harmonious community. And then the new short-term rental ordinance, it says to limit commercial use in a way that's safe for the guest, meets town requirements, doesn't change the character of the town and in districts in which STRs operate. This is a district where STRs operate, but based on the overwhelming support that you've seen from the letters of residents and you're here today as well, folks are concerned that if a cottage or if a short-term rental is permitted in the big house in the front with twice as many bedrooms and not in the cottage, then what you're going to have is something inconsistent with the whole purpose of the short-term rental ordinance, to control, to reduce, to contain the commercial footprint of this enterprise. So finally, I'll say the result of not permitting the short-term rental in the cottage instead of the main house, it's practically absurd if you look at the picture of the two houses. It's inconsistent with the desire of the majority of the neighbors, at least those that we've heard from, and it increases factors the ordinance was created to reduce. My clients are more than willing to condition having a short-term rental only in the cottage and not in the main house. The zoning administrator's decision says they can have a short- The zoning administrator's decision says they can have a short-term rental on the property. It would make sense, be consistent with the zoning ordinance's intent, and it would uphold the legally non-conforming historical use of short-term rental in the cottage, not in the main house. With that, I'm going to yield the rest of my time to my client, to Emily Gentry, and I'll be here also for further questions and then also for rebuttal period. And I want to say thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd really rather do nearly anything than speak in public. I've written down what I'm going to say so that I stay on track and so that I don't cry.
Could you just give us your full name, please?
Yes, I'm going to lead right off with that. Good morning, board members, town administrators, and neighbors. My name is Emily Gentry, and I'm speaking on behalf of my husband Greg and myself. I wanted to offer a little personal insight regarding our situation because we appreciate how truly unique it is. In its most basic form, we have a property with two single-family homes on it. One has been complete for a few years now, and we currently live in it. It is our only home and our primary residence. We call it the cottage, and that's how I refer to it today. The other house, we call the main house, is currently under construction and has not been habitable at any time since we purchased it in May of last year. Each house has its own address, its own water meter, and its own power meter. We receive bills each month for our utilities showing a service address of 509 Nectarine Street. We have believed since the first day we visited the property that all of these features prove us to be an oddity of a lot that the town has allowed for two single-family dwellings to be built on. Once completed, the new main house would be eligible for short-term rental, but the two-bedroom cottage is not. When we looked at this property, while it was in quite a state, it represented many of the attributes of our dream home. We wanted a place that we could make our own, where there would be room enough for all of our children and their growing families to come home to, and that would allow us to supplement our income in this next chapter of our life. We saw the potential, made the leap, and before we knew it, it was ours. It felt like a miracle, but we knew we had a long road ahead of us to make it all a reality. We absolutely had stars in our eyes, but we were wholly unprepared for all that has come our way in saving this little corner of our town. The property has a rich history, and unfortunately, some of its more recent events seem to have cast it in an unfavorable light with the town. We are doing our best to bring it back to life with a historic flair that will honor its origins and be an asset to our street and town. When we purchased it last summer, we set out straight away to improve what we could and make it less of a hindrance to our neighborhood while we took the necessary steps to restart construction on the main house. We hired an architect to make the modifications needed to turn the shell of a structure that existed previously into our dream home. We then went before this town's historic review board and finally tackled the permitting process. This portion of our quest was arduous on its own, but we followed along with all guidelines, and as soon as we were permitted, began work on the new house. We moved to town at what felt like the peak of the STR conflict, but we always believed that our two homes lot was a unique standalone situation and that we would be able to rent the cottage short-term regardless of the changes being made in real time. We had been told by many people, including neighbors and town employees, that we would easily obtain our STR license as the property had previously been rented on and off, sometimes for a week here and there, for as long as some could remember. We decided to move forward with our application for inspection for short-term rental last October so that we could rent over festive Fridays. We submitted our application for our business license and inspection for short-term rental. The application for the business license was accepted and ultimately issued. Our check, along with our application for inspection, was also accepted, but was later, we were told, shredded by town employees. We learned on our phone call with Katie shortly thereafter that our cottage was considered an ADU despite its many characteristics that would easily categorize it as a single-family home and would not be permitted as a short-term rental. All interaction was verbal, even though I followed up many times with town to find out the status of our application and asking for some type of written communication. It ultimately took over three months for us to receive an official determination in writing, as even the town administrators seemed to find this a very difficult distinction to make. That determination set into motion this process that we're all here today to make right. We have spent the past 10 months putting down roots here in Cape Charles. I am operating my business here in town and have opened my office over on Randolph Avenue. We are volunteering our time where we can be helpful. We are lucky enough to attend many fun events in town and support many worthwhile causes. We have made so many lovely friends here, and we are undoubtedly about to be the losingest duo on the Cape Charles Mini Golf Spring League. We have made a huge emotional investment in this entire process. The weight of carrying this constant worry for almost six months has absolutely taken a toll. We left behind our big life to come to Cape Charles for a simple life of peace and ease, but we have not yet been able to enjoy that lifestyle completely. We have been so overwhelmed, so distracted, so stressed, and so, so tired. Tired of thinking about it, tired of talking about it, tired of praying about it. Certainly, God has way bigger fish to fry. We have invested much of our savings into purchasing our property and completing the house. Being allowed to operate a short-term rental in our cottage is a crucial component in recouping some of these funds and making this all work for us from a financial perspective. We have no intention of ever renting out our new main house, and we are willing to sign a statement to that effect. While it's almost unthinkable, without this income stream, we may be forced to sell and move on. Like most people in this room, I believe that Cape Charles chose us. To say we love it here and feel so overwhelmingly blessed to be part of this community would be a weak depiction of our truth. We are asking this board to see reason and grant us permission to rent our cottage short-term so that we are able to put this chapter behind us and finally set out on the great adventure of making a new life here in Cape Charles. Thank you all for your careful consideration on this matter and for your services, service to the citizens of our town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to open the meeting up to the public. People would have comments regarding this applicant only. When you come forward, please give us your name and address, and we're going to ask you to be sworn in. The first name on the list is, signing list, is Diane, and I'm sorry, I don't have your list.
Diane Davis.
Oh, there you are.
Good morning. I am Diane Davis of Jefferson Avenue. Been here basically all of my life, so I've seen a lot of different changes during my lifetime. I don't want to lose these neighbors. I need them. But my concern, when they were talking about the house, that the house on 509 Jefferson, there's this new address, now the majority of my life, a building has been there. When I moved back here in 1978, people were living there, and I know different ones who've lived there. They've come and gone. Of course, during that time, we didn't have short-term rentals. And if we didn't have short-term rentals, now we have more people in town, but that's beside the point. So it was, that is why probably it was not a short-term rental, but we did have people living there. So that building has been, not that particular building that's there now, but there's always been a building there, and that is so important. Now, when I think about, I was real surprised, and I don't understand all of your terminology that you're using, but I do know that hopefully, whatever the problems are, the concerns will be worked out. Now, I can tell you where I live, it's on Jefferson Avenue. I'm not giving my number because I want people to send me letters, because I do get letters from time to time. I live in the 600 block of Jefferson Avenue. Right now, in the 600 block of Jefferson Avenue, we have four people, four homes that are actually there where people live. In the 500 block of Jefferson Avenue, there are four families that live there. Everything else are short-term rentals or second homes. And because of that, when I moved, I was young. I'm older now. The corners from me, I have nobody. There's nobody there. So if I need somebody, who do I go to? I need somebody on those corners, or whatever. And across from me, there was a problem, the people left, they moved, they thought there would be a favor, but something came up and they had to leave. So now there's no one across from me. And on the right-hand side of me, of course, still, that's the corner also. And I was so glad when the couple purchased the home over there and seeing them rebuilding the homes that was demolished, plus with the cottage that they're talking about, that they were actually there and that they plan to live here, that's the thing, somebody to live here. Because now, whenever someone comes in and they start saying, "We're building", my first question is, is it a short-term rental or are you going to live here? In most cases, it's a short-term rental. And some of them was building the homes and do the short-term rental, plus they do their such building, which is a short-term also. But we really need these people. We're losing the people, real, I say real people because people are living here. We're losing these people in the town of Cape Charles. So eventually, especially in our area, it would just be a blackout every year in the wintertime because no one would be here. So I would hate to see this Gentry's leave. Hopefully, you all can work out something that would make it good for everybody. Like I said, it's always been a building on that particular property that you are talking about at this time. And please do whatever you can to help them. We do need people to actually live in Cape Charles year-round. People are concerned about it. They are involved in the different activities that are going on, not just in the summertime, but they're here the entire time. So whatever you can do to make it possible for them to stay here at this particular time, we would appreciate that. May God bless each of you as you make your decision. Please keep in mind, being of service to all mankind is so important, and we do, as I said, need them. And I need them. I need somebody to help protect me. They're young folks. I am old. Bless you all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. The second name is Claudette.
LeJoy.
Would you please give your full name and address?
My name is Claudette LeJoy. I'm 127 Peach Street. Full-time resident of Cape Charles since 2010. So thank you all for your service here. I know you're volunteers, and it's greatly appreciated. First of all-
If you can go any further, could you please just raise your hand and swear that you-
Absolutely.
-tell the truth, nothing but the truth today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot about that part. I know better. So first and foremost, we are not unusual to have oddity properties here in Cape Charles. And so, as the attorneys have laid out, you actually have several options that are not in any way going to pigeonhole you to, should there be another odd property that's going to pop up here in the historic district. Here in favor of the Gentry's, they have literally epitomized every component of our strategic plan in order to bring in families, bring in businesses, bring in full-time residents that are active and vital roles to volunteering in our community, to supporting our businesses, as well as supporting our community as a whole. And I think that's important, that it be recognized that they have put forth time, effort, money, and there is a very viable plan to keep full-time residents in a home all year long and use the additional cottage as a means of income to keep them there here full-time. They do have a growing family as well, and so it's also important to hope that their children and their growing families will also want to become part of our community as it continues to grow, as a means of maintaining more and more full-time residents to be part of all of the boards, all of the communities, all the volunteers that we need to keep our small town running. So just in summary, I am here in favor of the Gentry's, and thank you for coming with a decision today that I hope will also favor them.
Thank you very much. And the last name on the list is Jeff Gray.
Hello, everybody.
Good morning. Would you please give your name and address?
Jeffrey Gray, 615 Monroe.
And raise your hand, swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth today?
I do.
Thank you.
So I see several of you who I know here, and anyway, thank you, everybody, for your service. This is a thankless job, I'm sure, and today is probably an example of that. I'm here supporting the Gentry's. Emily and Greg Gentry have been the most wonderful citizens of our town. Like many of us, including me, I've been here five and a half years full-time and own the house since 2015. But like many of us, you know, the Gentry's are come-hers, and thank goodness for them. They volunteer, they do good work for the town, they care about the town. And so when you hear about issues generally, about, like, and I say amen to Diane Davis, who just spoke. And I guess my comments, I don't really mean to get into the nuances of the legal analysis or the nitty-gritty. I'll leave that to the attorney sitting here, who seems to be very knowledgeable what he's talking about. But I want to talk about big picture for just a second. So often, I think courts, tribunals, boards can lose sight of common sense. And when I listen to what's going on with this, the thing that I keep coming back to is common sense. Now, do you have the authority to exercise common sense? Yes, you absolutely do. You've heard what the standards are. And by the way, preponderance of the evidence, which is their standards, in legal terms, if you imagine a scales of justice that are equal, and you drop one little grain of sand on one and it comes down a little bit, that's a preponderance of the evidence. It doesn't take much. And it basically allows you to do what you think is right and to use your common sense for this. When I think about this, and I'm sitting here trying to distill what I'm hearing, and again, forgive me for blabbing on about common sense, but it's the first thing that jumped into my mind. You're looking at a scenario here where they can use this very, you know, much larger place that they have rebuilt at great expense, at great effort and great, you know, investment. You can say, okay, that can only be used for, that can be used for short-term rentals. And you're going to pack a ton more people in there by doing that. And you could say to the Gentry's, well, you've got to live in this tiny little cottage that you never intended to live in. You've been living there like the previous owners while the other place is supposed to be completed. So you've heard here a choice. You can use common sense and accept their offer to say, okay, we agree that we will not use the larger dwelling for STRs. We'll live there, which is what they always wanted to do. We'll use the tiny little cottage for short-term rentals, which, as you've heard, will have half or less of the guests staying in it than, you know, the beautiful home that they're building that they want to use to live here. Please use your common sense. Don't run these people out of here. Let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, you want to read the letters that the town received regarding this application for appeal?
So the first one is from Kristen and John Thornborough. Dear Board of Zoning Appeals, we reside at 508 Nectarine, directly across the street from Emily and Greg Gentry. We purchased our home in 2015, so we have personally observed many changes in both the residences across the street from us. When we first moved in, the now torn-down smaller unit facing Nectarine Street had several different renters living there throughout the years until it became uninhabitable, with swarms of termites coming out of it, causing the floors to cave in. Since then, the beautiful home the Gentry's currently reside in was built, and now they are building their primary home facing Jefferson Street. In the spirit of the former home that stood there for years falling into neglect and disrepair, we have enjoyed watching the love and care they are providing to both homes and the value they add to our corner neighborhood in Cape Charles. We understand and support their desire to have a short-term rental on Nectarine-facing property. We would much rather see their smaller cottage rented out as our parking will be less impacted by renting the much smaller unit on their property. This property location has always been a rental since we have lived here, and we enjoy welcoming new folks to our community, and I have no objections at all to the Nectarine Cottage being a short-term rental. The improvements the Gentry's have made to our community in such a short timeframe are immense, and we do not understand why the town would allow a much larger home to become a short-term rental yet preclude the smaller home from being rented out. The smaller cottage location on the property has always been a month-to-month rental until the Doortys purchased it. The Doortys' plan was always to rent out on a short-term basis the smaller cottage once the larger Jefferson Street-facing home was renovated and they moved into that as their permanent residence. We have always supported this plan and planned to rent out the smaller cottage for our friends and family when they came to visit us. This is still our plan with the Gentry's, once they move into the larger home on the property. We have also been witness to the hypocrisy of the duplex next door to us on Nectarine being allowed to be split into two separate condo properties with both sides being allowed rented out on a short-term basis. To not allow the Gentry's to rent out a completely separate structure on their property, but to allow one structure, a duplex, literally 100 yards away, to be split into two separate short-term rental units seems like a complete injustice. Further, it smells of backroom dealing between the developer of the duplex in the town. Why does the developer get this opportunity, but someone who is actually living on the property and making our neighborhood better does not? We urge you to apply logic to this situation- better does not? We urge you to apply logic to this situation and permit the Gentry's to have their Nectarine Cottage as a short-term rental. They are prime examples of the kind of citizens that Cape Charles needs, as they have brought value to our street by renovating not one but two properties, and will be on-site managers for their short-term rentals. The next one's from Thomas Austin, who's at 506 Nectarine. Dear members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, I am writing to express my strong support for my neighbors Greg and Emily Gentry, who are seeking approval to allow short-term rentals in the accessory dwelling unit on their property located at 542 Jefferson Avenue. Since Greg and Emily moved into the neighborhood, they have made significant improvements to the property, which is previously in a state of repair. Their investment and hard work have not only enhanced the aesthetic appeal of their home, but have also positively impacted the overall appearance and value of our neighborhood. One of the key concerns often associated with short-term rentals is parking. However, I can confidently say that there is an ample parking available on our street, and the addition of short-term rental guests will not create any parking issues. Greg and Emily have always been considerate and respectful of neighbors, and I have no doubt that they will ensure their guests adhere to the same standards. Allowing short-term rentals in the ADU will provide the Gentry's with an opportunity to generate additional income, which will help them maintain and further improve their property. This in turn benefits the entire community by continuing to elevate the quality and desirability of our neighborhood. I believe that Greg and Emily have demonstrated their commitment to being responsible and having engaged members of our community. The proposal for short-term rentals is a reasonable and beneficial use of their property, and I wholeheartedly support the request and approval. Thank you for considering my perspective on this matter. I trust you will give Greg and Emily's application the favorable consideration it deserves. Next one's from Cheryl Simick, 539 Jefferson Avenue. I am writing to express my support for Emily and Greg Gentry's request to rent their two-bedroom cottage on 509 Nectarine in Cape Charles on a short-term basis. Currently, they are permitted to rent their house at 542 Jefferson on a short-term basis, but not the cottage. My Frank and I, who own the property across the street of 539 Jefferson Avenue, fully support the request. We believe it is in the best interest of the town for them to rent the cottage which sleeps four instead of the house which could sleep eight. This would mean fewer people and fewer cars coming in and out of town during the vacation season. Additionally, it gives the owners an incentive to continue residing in Cape Charles, which we believe is desired by the town. Since we know the Gentry's, we have found them to be wonderful neighbors. They have purchased the property with a half-built home and have worked hard to complete the structure according to regulations, securing all necessary permits, inspections, and approvals. The previous owners of the property may have had some issues with permits and misunderstandings with the town. We hope the Gentry's are treated fairly based on their actions rather than any perceptions of prior actions they had nothing to do with. The next one is Lauren Shopker and Mark Kito. To whom it may concern, we are the owners of 602 Jefferson Avenue and are writing in support of our neighbors Emily and Greg Gentry's application to have two primary residences at 542 Jefferson, one which they will plan to rent out to short-term rentals. We have no oppositions to short-term rentals in the neighborhood, and having the Gentry's living in the primary residence also forms the ability to be involved and engaged with the short-term rentals in their cottage, which generally leads to better outcomes for all parties. We recognize that you are evaluating many variables in this case as new homeowners in the neighborhood. We wanted to share that the Gentry's are the types of people that make a place like Cape Charles wonderful. The Gentry's were first to welcome us to the neighborhood, offered us to help, offered us help mowing and moving items in their pickup, let us borrow their tools to fix our shed and plumbing, have watched our home when we were away, and they are generally some of the nicest people around. We see the Gentry's as people that you want to build a community around. For us, they represent what makes Cape Charles so special. Thank you for considering our support of their appeal. Next one is Jill Lemery. To whom it may concern, I am writing this in support of Greg and Emily Gentry's appeal to use 504 Nectarine as a short-term rental. This home has its own property address and therefore should not be considered an accessory dwelling unit. I met Greg and Emily last year. They are a kind and giving couple. The Gentry's have become a staple in the community where they can be seen volunteering and/or attending most town events. Emily has also opened a business in town. It would be a great loss to our town if we lose these active members in our community due to the zoning issues that will most definitely have a financial impact on the family. I hope that the appeals board will overturn the previous decision. Next one's from Kathleen and Skip Frost. Board of Zoning Appeals, we are writing on behalf of Greg and Emily Gentry as they attempt to navigate a constant uncertain battle with the zoning issue with the town of Cape Charles. We have been in Cape Charles for 22 years now, and in my capacity as a town employee for a decade working in the finance department, I am certain the town is unfairly declaring the structure in question an ADU and thus not to be a short-term rental. The structure has three very unique differences from other ADUs. When it was originally constructed, it was given its own meter, and hence the property has been receiving a completely separate water bill from the main house. The owners have been paying two water bills for years. To my knowledge, no ADU in town has its own connection. Since it has its own connections, it has its own address as well. No ADU in town has its own address. When the original structure was built over the years, it had fallen into disrepair, so the previous owner did make repairs and redesigned on the original footprint. Therefore, we believe this structure should be grandfathered as its unique differences should not classify it as an ADU, but rather a completely separate dwelling on the property. Furthermore, when I worked in the finance department, my husband and I were considering buying the property with the intent of doing just what the Gentry's are doing. I did research and asked both the treasurer and planning and zoning department. It was told due to the above unique differences, we would indeed be able to short-term rent the smaller structure. I do hope all you award the Gentry's a variance, as we believe they are in the right in this dispute, and as our personal history with the property revealed, they are. Thank you for your consideration. Next one's from Courtney Frost, 34 Bridgeton Drive. Dear members of the board, I am writing to express my strong support for Emily and Greg Gentry in their appeal to rent out their independent dwelling located behind the primary residence here in Cape Charles. While I understand that current zoning regulations typically require homeowners to rent out the main house for short-term rental, Emily and Greg's situation is unique and deserves special consideration. Their independent dwelling has its own physical address and is built separately for water usage, distinguishing it from traditional accessory units and making it functionally more like a standalone home. Beyond the unique characteristics of the property itself, Emily and Greg are full-time residents and active local business owners who are deeply committed to the Cape Charles community. They consistently contribute to the town's vibrancy and economy, and they care for their property with the utmost attention and respect. Improving their, approving their request to rent out the independent dwelling would not only help support their family, but also provide a high-quality housing option in Cape Charles without distracting from the character or integrity of our neighborhood. Given their exceptional circumstances and ongoing contributions to the community, I respectfully urge the board to approve their appeal and grant them the allowances to rent out this independent dwelling. Next one's from Ned and Penny Barham. My name is Ned Barham. My wife and Penny and I live at 629 Jefferson Avenue in Cape Charles. My letter is in support of short-term rentals in Cape Charles. Our neighbors Emily and Greg Gentry are in the process of building a beautiful home with a smaller cottage on Jefferson Avenue. They are friendly and responsible neighbors that we have been fortunate to get to know. It has come to our attention that the Gentry's would like to be able to rent out their smaller cottage located on their property as a short-term rental. We are in support of allowing this to proceed. We've seen nothing but a positive situation with the landlord located on the same property as the renters. We have full confidence in the Gentry's contributing to and following through with making Jefferson Avenue a friendly and positive place. Finally, the last one's from Jim Grenger. Bottom line, I support Greg and Emily Gentry's request for a variance to allow for short-term rentals in their smaller house. As the second closest full-time residence to the Gentry's, property of 542 Jefferson Avenue, a property that I pass at least seven times every day while walking or dogs, I'm probably the person most impacted by the request to use their smaller house on the property as an STR, and I support the request. As you see in their packet, the property has a complex history. I'm going to set that aside and just speak to the issue of why I feel the variance should be issued. The Gentry's are full-time residents in the Cape Charles Historic District. Considering how few full-time residents are left in the Historic District, I feel we should accommodate them as much as possible. If plot of their property had a line in the middle of it, there wouldn't be an issue. As currently ruled, it's permissible to rent the main house, a potentially large STR that would continue the STR issues that exist throughout the Historic District, which I normally vigorously oppose. They are asking to rent their smaller house. I understand that this is classified as an ADU, but realistically, it's not. It's not a garage with a furnished attic. It's a small two-bedroom house. It's a limited, perfectly reasonable-priced STR for a single family of four to six people, the type of people I love to see in Cape Charles. With the Gentry's living in the larger house, the landlords are in sight, not absentees in Northern Virginia, Colorado, or wherever. That will prevent the typical land STR issues that are the bane of life in the Historic District. They don't want to rent the small house as a long-term rental because they have a lot of family that's reasonably close that comes to stay with them. I'm sure you've heard the story before. I've met many of the family members. They couldn't kick out long-term renters to accommodate their families, so an STR is a logical choice. The Gentry's are committed to Cape Charles as full-time residents. The Board of Zoning Appeals exists so that reasonable people can take an overall look at an entire situation and make exceptions to the rules as necessary. I feel the Gentry's situation is unique within the Historic District and is deserving of a variance. I strongly support their appeal.
Thank you, Jack. This is where we would ask the applicant if you had any rebuttal statements?
Thank you. And I'll keep this brief because I know you have an entire rest of the agenda to get to. I want to thank everyone for coming out and supporting those who spoke so far, also those letters, and then your consideration. Just a couple of items I wanted to bring back up, or at least speak to that were mentioned. We didn't have a chance to previously. The first one is that in the zoning determination letter, there are a couple of facts on which the zoning determination hinges. One of them appears to be lack of what Ms. Nunes called tacit government approval. That is for the 509 Nectarine address. And I think what you heard was tacit government approval. You saw in the building permits and inspections, and also the history of the property, tacit government approval of that being a primary residence. The second thing that you heard, or at least the zoning determination was based and part of, was not having anyone speak to a use of the 509 Nectarine as a short-term rental. So what you heard today, and what you saw in some of those letters, was exactly that. Observations, Ms. Jones, as well as the letter from the Thornbergs, and then those who spoke to that property being constantly renting out. I think Ms. Jones used the terminology "people coming and going." Well, people coming and going, now we call that short-term rental. But prior to the ordinance, there was no short-term rental because VRBO and Airbnb hadn't really made an onset. So prior to that, that was a use of this cottage, which is now, or should be considered, a legally non-conforming use. The final thing I'll mention is that while you have those options, you could recognize that it's based on tacit government approval. It's a separate address. It's a separate primary residence. It is the primary residence right now for purposes of it having short-term rental. You could also recognize it's a legally non-conforming use. And then the last thing I'll mention is that, but finally, what you could do, and I think you heard from most, if not all, of the residents who spoke, is that finding that the short-term rental's permitted at the large house, not at the cottage, if you don't reverse that, that's inconsistent with the intent, the spirit of the ordinance, which you're more than welcome to take into consideration. It's actually part of the text. So doing this, recognizing and agreeing with the appeal, modifying or at least overturning in part the zoning determination, allowing them to do short-term rental at the cottage but not at the main house, what that would actually do is it would maintain harmony in the community, as I think we heard an overwhelming support from the residents. So thank you again, and we request that you overturn either in part or in whole the determination so that the Gentry's can have short-term rental at the cottage, not at the main house. Thank you.
Now I'll ask the board if you have any questions of either the applicant or the town administrators regarding the application?
I do. The pictures that you handed out, you showed 598 Nectarine Street. Did you say that that has a short, that it has an ADU on it that's being used as a short-term rental?
Because it's not, because it is a-
So that's the house, or the two houses that I mentioned, the one with the light blue, I think that's the one. Not that-
That's a 409 Nectarine, that one as well.
Yeah, okay. So the one at 509? I think the one you're looking at is 409 Nectarine?
This is 409.
Yeah, yeah, 409. So that is a house, right, that's on Nectarine, that's operating as a short-term rental. I don't believe the town has classified it as an accessory dwelling unit. I'm not sure if they have or not, but I think that's due in part because the GIS mapping shows it as a separate lot.
Because at one point in time before the zoning ordinance, it was subdivided.
Correct.
Which sets a precedent for that.
It does not. It was subdivided prior to zoning.
Sure.
That's not a precedent. That's existing condition prior to zoning.
So one thing that the zoning determination letter goes into, though, is that exact point that you couldn't do that here. That's precisely what was done two blocks down, was two separate lots, the combination of which makes up the exact same size that the Gentry's have. So yes, if you're doing a deep dive into, you know, GIS mapping, et cetera, you would see that. If you're driving down Nectarine, what you'd see is, okay, two blocks down, that's the same situation we've got on Jefferson and Nectarine. So the same thing on Jefferson and Nectarine appears to be what's on Madison and Nectarine. And precisely what we're asking for permission to do is just like that house on Nectarine and Madison, to have the short-term rental on the cottage, just as the one at 409 Nectarine does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions as well. One, Katie, do we know, because I know this 409 Nectarine, the Madison and Nectarine, I know these are two separate lots. Do we know when that was actually divided? Because it has two separate owners.
No, I have not done any title work on this. I did indicate that to Mr. Pakta when we spoke earlier in the week, that if they're going to introduce that as a similar case, they would need to do that title work to show when that property was subdivided. I think it was subdivided, as was already noted, prior to the town having zoning in 1992. Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I also have a question. You were saying that this, you get two service bills, one for, well, you specifically said water, so you get two separate water-
We get separate utility bills for both properties, for both homes.
Individually.
There's a water meter for 509 Nectarine. There's a water meter for 542 Jefferson. Two power meter boxes. So there's a power meter on the cottage. There's a power meter on the house, two separate bills, and our dumb spectrum.
Okay.
And that is included in the zoning ordinance, that you can have separate water for accessory dwelling units?
That's correct. When the council adopted the ADU ordinance for the first time, they actually envisioned that some of these long-term rentals may wish to bill separately for those long-term rentals to carry the water sewer and other utilities that are outside of their control, meaning electric, that's not part of the town function. And that's actually written into our ordinance that that is absolutely permissible. Yes.
I have one question here for Ms. Nunes. Are there any ADUs in the Historic District that are STRs?
No.
I have a, I guess, are we in discussion right now for the board? Is that the portion we're in?
If you have any questions of the town or the applicant.
Okay, I can move to discussion as a board?
We may have a motion first. Are we finished asking questions of the applicant or the town?
Yes.
I've got the motion.
A motion?
So are you closing the public?
Wait.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I do have one other question, and I believe Katie would be able to answer this. Do we know both of these structures are historically contributing structures?
I believe, I believe yes for both. Definitely the house is a contributing structure that was going through the historic district process. I also believe, there's a definition associated with contributing structure. I don't know if the accessory dwelling was on the inventory list for the historic district. I don't know that off the top of my head. No.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Close the public hearing this, and I'll call for a motion for the discussed application.
I move we close the hearing and move to discussion.
My second.
Did I do that right?
Usually, we have a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'll probably close the public hearing officially.
I just did.
So you've got a motion?
Oh, a motion to approve.
Let's start again. You're asking for a motion to close the public hearing. Elise just made, am I correct, made that motion?
And I second it.
She seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, I'd like to have a call for a motion regarding this application. Does anybody want to take Elise?
Boy, I wish we could use common sense. That seems to be a, unfortunately, as a BZA member, I have to follow what I interpret as the decision that was made, whether that is appropriate to our zoning laws or not. I have a motion to actually table this matter only because I would like to see a couple of things. I would like to see the original plat of the town and when that 409 Nectarine property was divided from whatever the address is on Madison. I would just like to review that and make sure of that date. So that's, my motion is to table, but that's...
Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
For the discussion?
I don't know the procedure. Are we allowed to discuss at this point?
Yes, yes. We make the motion so we can discuss it amongst ourselves.
Okay. I think it's important to acknowledge the difficult position that the zoning administrator was placed in during this case. The renovations, which were accepted by various town staff, inadvertently contravened Section 4.2, Item E of the zoning ordinance. This left the zoning administrator with limited options and necessitated a classification that no longer accurately reflects the current state of the secondary structure. We've heard it has two bedrooms, and that's not the way we're describing ADUs in our zoning ordinance. The zoning administrator made a reasonable determination within the constraints of the existing ordinance, though this case in particular highlights a gap in the zoning framework. The footprint of the two structures on the property has existed long before Cape Charles' zoning ordinance was adopted in 1992, a historical fact that predates the establishment of the current zoning framework. Other properties in the R1 zone that are smaller than the required 5,600 square foot minimum lot size were subdivided prior to the enactment of the ordinance, providing clear, for semantics, I would, I don't, a synonym to the word precedent, I know you don't agree with the semantics of that word, but insert synonym for that word that doesn't have a legal implication. But for considering this property under unique circumstances, I think the picture of the house with the blue siding is an example. I also have a lot behind my house that was subdivided that is notably very small. The secondary structure on the property underwent substantial renovations by the previous owner, resulting in a dwelling that no longer meets the definition of an accessory dwelling unit as outlined in Section 4.1, J1, C, and D of the zoning ordinance. I've got that here for reference. Physical characteristics of an accessory dwelling unit. Accessory dwelling shall have one kitchen, one bathroom, and a sleeping area. Accessory building shall not have the appearance of a single-family dwelling. I spent a lot of time the past two weeks walking around our historic district and noted this structure in particular bears absolutely no resemblance to any of the other accessory dwelling units in our historic district. If you had no knowledge of the lots, you wouldn't know that it's an accessory dwelling unit. It bears a single-family dwelling as a result of these renovations that unfortunately took place, that have been tacitly accepted according to the legalese. So I think within the historic district context, the structure resembles a detached single-family dwelling physically rather than an accessory dwelling unit, and the absence of language addressing this intermediary dwelling creates an ambiguity in our zoning ordinance. So I think, given these unique circumstances, a different kind of motion is possible, and I would just argue that we consider perhaps a different motion.
You would love, I think, to say it?
Nothing.
I can't remember if we had a second. Should we vote on the motion?
We had him.
I second. Katie?
I have one request for clarification. If I understand your motion, you're asking for the title work to be done on this property at 409?
Nectarine, yeah.
Nectarine. Who's going to be undertaking that title work?
Boy, I thought, wouldn't that be the responsibility of the attorney for, to present this, or no?
You can ask it of him, but you cannot order him to do so. Because we do not pay him. That is the Gentry's attorney.
Well, I would appreciate that, but if that's not the case, I would consider going to the county and seeing if I can find, I mean, I know it's two separate owners. I don't know when it was originally divided into two separate lots, and that's where my question is, is when it was divided. Because the only thing I'm seeing, and I'm just rambling, the only thing I'm seeing a good solution to this would be the same, if this was two separate lots. I think...
That would be the kind of motion I would like to put forward if we could consider putting this one to rest.
That, just because of, and I don't know who signed these in the past, of giving it a separate address and kind of accepting it, so that's kind of where my mind frame is going. If this was to be two primary residences, it would have to be two separate lots.
Correct.
And so that's why I just kind of wanted to...
So they have not actually presented any evidence that they are two separate lots.
Right.
Currently, of the address in question today.
Right, and I totally understand that. I'm just wondering...
So I'm unclear how that will assist you, because it's not similar in that regard. Because whatever is occurred at 409 Nectarine is two separate properties.
Right.
Which is not equal to this address.
Regardless of when it was done, it was done, and the two lots are smaller than the minimum requirement of 5,600 square feet.
Right, so it could be done, but I'm just curious when it was done, because so many ordinances have come into play since then.
Sure.
That are concerning. And it's just a little ambiguous, because some people in town have recognized this as a 409 Nectarine, yet it's not. And, I mean, there's no address. You're saying that there's no official address assigned to this dwelling?
I'm going to back up. 409 Nectarine is a different parcel. I'm getting very confused when you're mixing addresses.
I'm sorry, I meant 509 Nectarine.
Sorry.
509 Nectarine.
That's correct. It is not a recognized town address from my office, Planning and Zoning, Building Office, who oversees the 901 Street Addressing, nor at the county records, who does all the assessment and tax billing of properties in the town of Cape Charles.
Right.
Let's not bill as a separate lot. It might be receiving mail.
It might be receiving mail. I can't stop the post office from doing certain things of trying to deliver mail to certain establishments, so.
Just seems...
I do have an idea that I think gets at what you're getting at, but I can't put it forward until we vote on this motion that you have on the table.
So, all those in favor of the motion presented by Lori to table this for an opportunity to do some title work, all those in favor of her motion, say aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Moving forward.
Okay, so I read the appeal procedure in our Board of Zoning Appeals guidelines, so I'm referencing Article 7, Section 8, that states to finalize the appeal procedure, we can motion to sustain, reverse, vary, or modify the order requirement or determination appealed. So I move to vary Section 3.1E of the Cape Charles zoning ordinance, specifically the minimum lot size requirement, and Section F1 regarding the prohibition of the subdivision of residential lots as it applies to the property involved in this case. Given these unique circumstances, the motion is consistent with the intent of the zoning ordinance and seeks to provide a fair resolution to both parties. In addition, I recommend the property owner make every reasonable effort to distinguish the secondary structure from the main structure to avoid future confusion and align with the intentions of the zoning ordinance. I also suggest that town staff work toward a recommendation to the town council to address this gap and provide clarity in future cases.
But the applicant didn't ask to have the property subdivided.
The attorney proposed that as solution number three.
Yep, I made, close public hearings before I can speak. Yeah, I did propose this as number three. And I think your, as you just read, Madam Board Member, that the ordinance for your charge gives you the opportunity to modify, sustain, impart, or in whole, or to grant any necessary variance, so that would effectuate whatever that exception might be. And I'm not the town attorney to advise you as such, but that is what the ordinance reads.
Thank you. Does anybody, do I have a second to Elise's?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Could you please read that again?
Yes, it's on the Cape Charles Board of Zoning Appeals procedural document. Article 7, Section 8 states basically the instructions of how to close an appeal, a variance, a special use permit, and for appeals, the procedure states motion sustaining, reversing, varying, or modifying the ordinance requirement or determination appealed from. So I motion to vary.
If I may, board, your decision is to either uphold the zoning decision determination or deny it, and list the reasons why you're denying that decision. You actually can't grant a variance to an element of the ordinance, because that is not actually before you today. So your charge is to take the zoning decision determination that was before you and either uphold it or deny it.
I got this straight off the town website, so I don't know...
There is no variance application before you.
This is the procedure for an appeal.
I understand that.
As stated in the document.
As an appeal, so you have to state in your decision where I have erred in applying the zoning ordinance to the decision issued for this property.
I stated in my discussion, I don't believe you erred. I think this property in particular is an ambiguous situation where it's neither an ADU nor a detached single-family unit, and therefore, I'm motioning to vary, which is allowed in Article 7, Section 8.
Okay. Then you need to take your action accordingly, but again, I don't think you have actually met the burden of law in reviewing the decision issued by the zoning administrator and finding either I was at fault, how I was at fault in applying and administering your zoning ordinance, or upholding it.
I stayed up quite late studying. I'm a new member, and I wanted to know how this gets resolved, and this is where I found the answer in the document on the town website. There's different, that's true for a variance application with the language you're talking about. This is for an appeal, and he stated very similar, the attorney, however, he didn't include language about varying, but in our document, it does say varying.
And so, just so I understand, your motion is providing tacit approval, approval by this motion, if it is approved, to allow the Gentrys to subdivide their land and create a smaller parcel than what is allowed under the zoning ordinance today, and where it is specifically prohibited in the zoning ordinance not to allow the creation of a lot less than 5,600 square feet in the R1 district.
That was my motion.
Okay.
Well, I don't think as this board that we're authorized to do that, at this juncture, at least not with this appeal, but we have...
May I have a comment?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to reference some other language, I think maybe that was being slightly overlooked, is that 2.6.4 of your powers and duties, so that comes from your powers and duties authorization. It says in exercising your powers, so I agree with Ms. Nunes in part, it says the board may reverse or affirm wholly or partly. And then it goes on to say, or may modify any order, requirement, decision, or determination appealed from. So you actually have a third option, and again, I understand I'm speaking, I'm not speaking, we have the town, but as a representative for my clients, but the code says, or your provision says, modify any order, requirement, decision, or determination. So what you could do is you could affirm in part, you could uphold in part, and then you could modify in part. You don't, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. You affirm everything, or you deny everything. Your powers and decisions, provisions seems clearly to state that you can modify an order, requirement, decision, or determination. I just want to make you all aware of that.
Thank you. Elise made the motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Can I call for a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No.
Nay.
So we're back to where we started. So, is any other discussion, anybody have any other suggestions as to where we go forward from here?
Let me think about this, okay? If we either affirm or deny part of the, part of the appeal and then modify it, is that legal?
I don't know what you're looking to affirm or deny.
She's not an attorney. Also, I have it pulled up for your reference. I'm on page five out of seven of the Town of Cape Charles Board of Zoning Appeals Rules of Procedure amended January 9, 2024. I'm in Article 7, titled Procedure for Hearing Cases, and I'm in Section 8. The final disposition of any appeal shall be in the form of a motion sustaining, reversing, varying, or modifying the order requirement, or in this case, determination appealed from. Varying is effectively a variance. They did not apply for a variance, to my knowledge, Ms. Nunes did not recommend that they apply for a variance. So it's using our best judgment, having all the facts considered, I think a variance would have been the most appropriate solution. They appealed it, and based on our procedural documents, that is something we are allowed to do.
I will go back to my initial suggestion to table this matter, if everyone feels more comfortable with that. I know I would like to do a couple of research. One is on the other property, and do some more research as far as, the thing that is just confusing to me is this does set a precedence, to me, I believe this sets a precedence when the building department has put on an official document that there is a 509 Nectarine. So that's where the ambiguity is to me, that I'd like to do a little more research on that, and when did that come about, and why is the town...
But respectfully, Laura, that's kind of a semantical thing here. The fact of the matter is, is that the two structures in question are on one parcel.
Right.
So within our zoning ordinance, you cannot rent a short-term rental... you cannot rent a short-term rental unless it is the primary dwelling.
Right.
So the solution here is to divide the lot so that the cottage becomes the primary dwelling of the lot.
Right.
Or I think another plausible option was the legal nonconforming use, if we want to accept the testimony we heard today, that there have been historical uses that were short term.
I believe, I believe the same thing with the division of the lots. I think that would be the most reasonable.
Agreed.
Response to this because there has been some sort of, well, we're not going to use the word precedence, but some sort of the town acknowledging already that there are two separate addresses.
Sure.
That's why I just, I wanted the table just to do a little more investigation on that about, this isn't an official address, but yet they're showing it on paperwork as an official address.
But even if it were an official address, which I similarly inquired why, when I received the packet, why can't the town recognize it as an official address? From a zoning standpoint, I don't believe that even if it were, that it would change the circumstances that we find ourselves in.
Okay.
And so from, from the framework that we have, that the motion I made prior was the solution that I saw based on the things that we're talking about. Another option is we could suggest they apply for a variance, but I think based on the procedure here, we have the power to do that without making them pay $500 when they've already gone through all of this work.
Totally understand. However, the law states that we, on an appeals, we are just trying to determine whether we approve or disapprove of her decision. This being her decision of saying that, no, this is not a separate address. This is an accessory.
I'll just say, I disapprove with the analysis that this is an accessory dwelling. I also made a point to say that I think Katie is in a very difficult situation because if it's not an accessory dwelling, what is it? I think our zoning ordinance has a gap here due to the renovations that the previous homeowner made. Now it resembles more a single-family detached dwelling, but the definition of that in our zoning ordinance is, forgive me, I wrote it down somewhere. It's, it's got to be on an individual lot. And so now we're back to the lot question. And so I think the solution is just to allow them a variance to divide their lot, just as we've seen has been done in the past throughout town. There are plenty of lots that are smaller than 5,600 square feet.
Agreed, but my question is, does that happen in this proceeding? Is this proceeding where we can actually legally allow a variance? Or does that have to come back as a separate proceeding? That's, that's kind of where I'm.
I think we are based on the procedural document that was amended January 2024.
Get your exercise.
If I may, at this point in time, while you do not have an attorney assigned directly to you, I would say, I would hope your motion moves forward to table this matter today and set up a meeting with the town manager to convey to him your motion that's on the table that hopefully would be passed, the dilemma at issue and what the proposed solution that is being advanced to solve this problem, and see if he is authorized to consult with town council, town attorney, to determine if that is an appropriate action available to this board as a result of this, this appeal today.
And can we sit in on that consulting?
That is not my call to make.
No, okay.
But again, I will arrange for, for the chairman to meet with the town manager and, and receive this information and take it from him because again, the town attorney is employed by the, the town council. So I'm not authorized to, to say he is, he can offer his legal services to you. That's something only council can do. Town council, for, for town council, sorry. Town attorney.
I would be curious what the other attorney in the room thinks.
Yeah, I need to be careful. I don't represent BZAs. It would be inappropriate for me to advise you on what you can and can't do. I can state what the ordinance, as I read this, says, which does say to modify an order requirement, decision, or determination, as well as what Madam Board Member read. I will also say you have other alternatives here today, not just this one. You heard, you heard no testimony that this wasn't operating as a short-term rental in a legally nonconforming manner. You only heard testimony that it was. So remember, the standard for this is not beyond a reasonable doubt, nor clear and convincing evidence, but it's preponderance, as one of the supporters mentioned. And so if any of that testimony tipped the scales for you into favor of there being some sort of observation or testimony that there was a short-term rental, not just rental, some time prior to categorize as legally nonconforming, it seems to me, and I would submit, you have the option to recognize it as such, which you do have the authority to do, clearly known as disputing that. That would achieve the same desired outcome. I think here you also have a couple of other options, so.
I think at this point, we're kind of stymied as to, as to where to go from, as we move forward. And I think Katie's suggestion that we get some counsel from both the town manager and the town attorney as to what our options are and how we've been presented with, as Elise said, a very unique situation, due in part to some ambiguities within the zoning ordinance.
Before we do that, may I ask, do?
We actually don't even have a motion on the table. I have first, a motion made by Laura, but nothing has been seconded yet.
Right.
So it might help to get a second before you.
No.
Did you make a motion?
No.
To table?
She did. She motioned to table this matter and conduct research on the other property referenced by the attorney.
Will we turn that down?
But she, but she put it back.
Yeah, I did. I did put it back. Uh huh, but nobody seconded it.
I just have a question before we do the second. I'm just trying to understand this better. It just, I'm the newest member. Does anyone feel comfortable with the language of, I just don't know how to put forth the motion yet still about the legal nonconforming use argument.
Well, right now, we have a motion on the floor regarding tabling this. So as to your question, we could address that.
But none of, none of you all do? Because that would affect my vote if it gets a second.
None of us all do what?
Have an opinion about how we could today, without tabling it, talk about the legal nonconforming use.
That's another issue, though. Right now, we have a motion on the floor about tabling it. So we need to have a second and a vote.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor of?
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second to table this.
To table.
Until we get town council.
Can I ask for some clarity about what it is that you all want to take to the, to the town attorney and, and the town manager? What specific issue are you all taking back to them?
I think the question is, what options do we have?
Okay, okay, I understand.
I mean, the options that have been, that may be presented today, maybe not. Maybe there's another option.
I understand.
Looking for some legal direction at this point.
They, because, you know, they've had this in their, in their office since last October and to.
But, but we haven't.
Sure, I understand, yes, yeah. But they've seen all of this allegedly.
So we've had it a week.
We also didn't have access to, to the comments until today, so.
This morning.
Yeah.
And, and as BZA members, we are, we are entitled to meet with an attorney assigned to us for guidance. And it's just because this is an appeal, legally, I know we can only say yea or nay. I, and that might answer your question, Elise, that I'm not quite comfortable with a nonconforming use because I'm not quite sold on that it was ever an STR.
Sure.
I don't know how long this, people coming and going, could be a couple of months here, a couple of weeks here. We don't know.
So I think to answer your question, it would be about the, the options, to my understanding, to, to vary. Is that possible? Is that legal? What I put for?
That's right.
The subdivision.
The subdivision.
The motion on the table is to table, the motion on the table. The motion on the floor is to table this after we've had an opportunity to meet with township manager and the township attorney regarding the, the options to the BZA on this application. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yay.
The motion carries. Just hold a minute, Mrs. Davis, okay? Do you need anything? Katie, would you set up that meeting?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Try to set up that meeting as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, do you want to come forward?
Yes, I would. Do I do here for here?
Right here is good.
Okay, my question is, because I know with the different changes and everything, now they're here for this, meaning they've been waiting for a time. Do they have to pay money again if they have to come back before you all?
Not to us.
No. Up to the town or anybody? Because it's just so sad, and I hate to see this happening.
You still have open application, and you're in the first floor.
Right.
Okay.
So they do not go apply again.
So don't.
Yes. We've got more to go. Yay.
Whenever you're ready, Madam Chairman, for the next hearing.
The next item on our agenda is an application from Bay Creek Resort for a variance from the Akamaki Plantation Plan Unit Development, section 9.9 for a fence over the allowable six-foot height requirement at 111 Palm away.
As, as you've indicated, they are seeking a variance for a fence that was constructed. It is adjacent between the, the golf cart maintenance facility and a new, soon-to-be-constructed residential development going in with, oh, I should have known this off, just over 50 units, sorry?
I think it's 42.
Forty, it's forty something, it's somewhere up there. Mark will correct me because Mark Bramhill is here from Bay Creek to speak on this as well. So through this ordinance, I do want to acknowledge the town has, has for, for now, several years running, three, almost three years running, discussed with Bay Creek the, the need and the desire to amend the Bay Creek PUD ordinance, which is a, a separate ordinance. It is an attachment, an appendix to our zoning ordinance, but it is its own standalone ordinance that governs the Bay Creek properties. And part of the delay in moving that review forward has been our desire to, need to correct our own zoning ordinance, which that process was concluded in December of, of 2024. And we are doing the final editing to get that fully posted with all the changes that happened through that process. So we do intend on, on taking that up as quickly as we can with Bay Creek, but they have not been able to sit with the town and it makes the necessary amendments to their zoning ordinance. And we have a list of issues, and this happens to be one of those issues. So I, I do want to stress to, to some extent, this does fall upon the responsibility of the town that we did not try and resolve and get their ordinance amended prior to now because we really do feel this really shouldn't have to happen through a variance to seek a greater height for this type of fence. It should have been through, through an ordinance correction, an ordinance amendment. But we have been shuffling as many balls as we possibly can through the town, and we were just not able to add one more to our plate in the last three years, as you know, so, or you may not know. So I apologize for that. So with that said, that is why, from a, from a staff perspective, we are in support of this variance. We do feel it is a unique situation. It really is meant to screen what is a, a utility function to support their overall subdivision of the Bay Creek properties away from, from a planned residential development. This is not new. This was always the original plan that there would be a subdivision going into this particular location right adjacent to where the, the golf maintenance shed is. And that's all I have. And if you'd like to, the applicant is here from Mark Bramhill, representing Bay Creek.
Does Mr. Bramble wish to speak?
I'll keep it really short. It's been a long day for you. I truly appreciate your time. Mark Bramble, Bay Creek Development, the parent development company, here on behalf of Bay Creek Resort, which is the golf course arm of the company and owner of the property. I'm going to have to bend over a bit. There we go. Get a little closer. The property in question, one of the questions we have is its zoning. What is its current zoning? The current PUD, a 9.9, allows for a six-foot fence in residential and an eight-foot fence in three other zones, all commercial zones, C, SC, and GBI. It's my contention, the property is zoned CO, which sounds really weird, but it's conservation, open space. It's the only zoning classification that allows a maintenance building in it. Unfortunately, it doesn't allow fences. Now, the property has fences on it already, had fences on it. There's other areas within the golf course that have fences. So we're stuck in a quandary. Hence, I applied for a variance in this place. It is a very utilitarian function. It is a commercial entity. I mean, it employs 40 people. They start really early, and screening is really important. The reason the fence was picked was primarily because, A, it will help a little bit with noise. On the subdivision side, there is a row of wax myrtles that has been planted and that will grow up and helps hide some of the bottom of the fence and ultimately might grow high enough to be completely screened it off and make it a soft look. There is a letter in favor of the eight-foot fence from the adjoining developer, that in this case is not us. We sold the property to somebody else. If you have any further questions, I'll try and answer. Thank you.
Anybody have questions of Mr. Bramble?
I do. Is there any other areas that are zoned this CO?
Oh, yes. Unfortunately, a lot. Think of the whole golf course.
Okay.
The pool complex down at the, what we call the live center down on Bayside. And also, the POA's pool complex and tennis facility is all zoned CO. This is one of the things we were going to clean up. It doesn't seem right to have a commercial use in what something called a conservation open space. So, but I'm stuck with it. We might, as we progress through the modification, introduce a, another zoning classification to clean some of this stuff up. But that'll, that'll be our discussions as we move forward with staff.
Any questions here? Were there any, any people, everybody in the public that wish to speak?
Do you want to sign up to speak? I think we do a whole lot of.
One letter from Reese Smith, I believe.
Letters from Reese Smith. Dear members of the Cape Charles Board of Zoning Appeals, as the owner of the adjacent parcel located to the west of the above-referenced property, please allow this letter to serve as our notice that we fully support the zoning variance application to be considered on April 8, 2025. The owner has no objection whatsoever to the applicant's request for a variance for a fence over six feet tall.
Well, great.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, could I have a motion to approve the, the variance request?
We got to have a, we got to approve, approve the case here.
Oh, I thought you, why do I keep? I apologize. Gray hair does that. Have a motion to, to approve the.
I already did.
Yeah, motion and second.
Vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Now, is there any discussion?
I make, I make a motion that we approve the variance application submitted by the Bay Creek Development Tax Map, for a variance to allow for a fence greater than eight feet pursuant to Akamak Plantation PUD, section 9.9.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The last thing on the agenda, other than adjournment, is a.
Yes.
Five-minute.
Five, five-minute break. Everybody back? Next on the agenda is an application from Chris Larmore, developer of Dreams by the Water subdivision on Washington Avenue, for a variance from Cape Charles zoning ordinance for a reduction in the front and rear setbacks for 10 lots, which are all of the lots in that subdivision, correct?
Correct. Just to give a little background, while I know you actually heard some of this at last month's meeting, again, I'm doing this for the public edification and we are being streamed on Facebook as well for this meeting. So with that said, this property is the old Coast Guard housing property on Washington Avenue. In 2020, they sold that property after they had demolished the structures. And at that point, that was purchased by Dreams by the Water LLC and its agent, Tom Cavounas. At that time, they submitted a conceptual sketch for a subdivision for this property into 10 residential lots using the already-established layout location of the old parking lot, which had to be upgraded to comply, to meet the required road standards into the V dot road system for a new subdivision. After considerable amount of discussion on the subdivision requirements, a preliminary plat was submitted in June 2021. The initial review of that preliminary plat was completed and required corrections and resubmission to the town. The town was finally able to approve the preliminary plat on July of 2022 and signed off on the utility and right-of-way construction drawings for the subdivision in full compliance with the subdivision ordinance and the underlying zoning district of R1 with their development requirements contained in Article 3. Just so everyone's aware, the front property setback in the R1 zoning district is 30 feet, and the rear property setback is 25 feet. The applicant is seeking a 10-foot variance from both of these setbacks on each lot in this subdivision. Through this process, not only did the applicant have to answer all the ordinance requirements to be considered for variance, which we have provided for you to review, staff has also done their own analysis of this information as well. I think one of the things that I wanted to highlight for you is what is unique about this subdivision is while they truly met the underlying square foot requirement, and the R1 district was 5,600 square feet, as you know, there has always been a presumption in the bulk of the R1 zoning district that that lot composition is made up of 40 feet by 140 feet, 40 feet wide, 140 feet in depth. And that's the traditional layout contained in the town of Cape Charles when it was laid out in 1884. With this subdivision for Dreams by the Water, they do have some unique, I don't know what else to call it, square, squashy fat lots that don't quite meet the depth that was envisioned in our zoning ordinance. While they did adhere to meet the 5,600 square feet, that has been, I think, some of the challenge, as this has been tried to develop moving forward, because it has not had the full depth that every other lot within our town has had where these setbacks have been applied to. And so, for example, on Lot 1, as I said, the 40 feet is the required width across the front. That Lot 1 is at 45 feet, it exceeds that requirement. The lot depth is at 56.77, whereas traditionally elsewhere in the town, again, it would be 140 feet. So you can see there are some challenges with developing this due to the nature of the size of the actual lots that are now more square, not long rectangles. So I did want to point that out within this consideration, why this makes it a tad bit different than the rest of the lots in the R1 zoning district. There is no disputing that this entity, meaning the formation, the number of lots, and how this has been platted out, is definitely a functionality of Dreams by the Water LLC, who acquired this property, and they are the ones who submitted the plat. Yes, they were trying to maximize the number of parcels that they could create on this parcel, out of this total parcel, which brought it to 10 lots, but definitely it is a bear of their own crossing, so to speak. Will this have a detrimental effect to adjacent property? And so at this point, there is a neighborhood called Bay Vista Ways that is on one side of the property, that abuts or adjoining to it, the backside of it. So their considerations are definitely real and have to be part of your consideration today. On the other side, that is all vacant land, and it will never be developed. It is part of the Bay Creek Homeowners Association, and that's their stormwater pond that's over there, the big lake that's over there, that's part of the stormwater pond supporting the Bay Creek development. And there will be no development on that side of the equation. So five of the lots, easily from a rear yard perspective, will have no impact if the variance is granted. There's a potential that there is a perceived impact to the Bay Vista's property as well. I do want to stress, because I know this is in the, I think, some of the testimony you're going to receive this morning, and in the letters received, of concern over impact of stormwater adjacent or intruding onto the Bay Vista properties. That is a actual state law, and it's in our town ordinance, in the town zoning ordinance dealing with stormwater management. That is a requirement that every lot has to address and retain stormwater on their own property as a result of their development. It cannot have an overflow onto an adjacent property, that cannot be the solution. So I just want to make you aware that is both something we take very seriously, and the state actually provides oversight with us in ensuring that that is met from a state perspective. As I said, they are all seeking this same variance. We do find this situation is very rare and not normal, so this is not something I would ever consider to actually be an amendment to the zoning ordinance, because this is unique to this subdivision. Do I think there could have been an earlier intervention process offered by the town officials when the subdivision plat was first being reviewed? Yes, I think that opportunity has passed by itself when I have now reviewed the zoning ordinance and specifically the subdivision ordinance, because in the subdivision ordinance, it does include an exception process, and again, that's specifically in Appendix B, Section 7.1, that would allow for some reduction of some of these setback requirements. And they provide that flexibility to the zoning ordinance, zoning administrator, in their review of the subdivision plats as they come forward in compliance with the authority granted to the subdivision agent, which I do serve in that capacity. I was not here in either capacity, working for the town, when this was moving through its approval stages initially. I did not come on full-time until July of 2022. And so, yes, I am the one who got in that very first week I was here just to get the final plat to a point of signature by the town manager, by our wastewater and sewer departments, and all the necessary officials, including VDOT. But by that point, it was a done preliminary plat. It was all done, it just had not been executed. So I wish I had been here to be able to make them aware of this provision in the subdivision ordinance and had it exercised as such, but that was not the case. So that is why this is before you this evening, or this evening already? This afternoon, sorry. So I wanted to make you aware of that. I will say, from a staff perspective, it is not the town's position, nor your position, to consider the financial impact of whether you can approve a zoning ordinance or variance to a zoning ordinance or not approve it. Your considerations needs to be with the application of your criteria and the ordinance itself. As I mentioned, they need to pass muster on all six of the criteria, and I think Chris would be speaking on this further when he makes his presentation to you, Chris Larmore, on behalf of the Dreams by the Water. I do recognize that they would like to build a certain style and size of home, but that is not necessarily a consideration of this board to make that happen. So I just wanted to put that out to you for your consideration. Lastly, I think one of the criteria I look at is would this have an impact from a zoning ordinance perspective? Again, this is very unique and rare to a subdivision that's been created sort of off the path, meaning it is perpendicular to the historic district. It is its own self-contained parcel sitting out there, and all of its lots are created out of that. Could they have done a better job? Absolutely. And how that was created, it may not have resulted in 10 lots being formulated out of that subdivision plat. It may have been something less to make it a more desirable development plan to meet all the setback requirements and still achieve the size and style and model of the home that they were hoping to put on these properties. But with that said, I do feel there is some consideration that would this be such a detraction if it is approved with these variances? So I will stop there. I think that gives you the overview of the application before you, and we do have the applicant here to present his case.
Mr. Larmore?
Good afternoon. Chris Larmore, 10603 Shiftin Sands Drive, Ocean City, Maryland. I come before you today on behalf of all of the lot owners and the development with which you have the information. I would like to take the opportunity, but I believe it would be better applied after the letters are read to be able to address those and give you the information, so that will help you make the determination. Because up until seeing those letters, as many of you did just this morning, I wasn't aware that there was any opposition, so if we can address that separately. By means of to recapture our previous meeting, as Katie said, for the benefit of the public, I come before you today with what I believe to be a much better development than can be done without the variance. That's the bottom line. As Katie did such a great job explaining, the uniqueness in the issue is the depth of the lots. And contrary to maybe some that would think that you can do a better job if you take a couple of lots out, it still does not change the depth of the lots. The depth of the lots was done as a result that they were required to put in a Virginia VDOT-approved road. That road in Eastman is 50 feet wide. That's what, in hindsight, was the Achilles' heel to the entire development. That's what took the depth of the lots up, still much less than the standard Cape Charles lot. So as I explained previously, quite to the irony, we are actually asking for an approval of less buildable envelope than is currently approved. But instead of that envelope being in width, we're asking for some depth. And as I addressed those letters in their entirety, which I totally understand their concern, I think you will see glaringly that in fact, we're using less than what we could otherwise, you know, have the ability to build. So you have a tough job, I recognize that. I'm hoping that we can continue to converse, where you'll see that this is the right thing to do. I'm not going to be redundant as to your previous testimony that everyone clearly was able to tell you, or I should say, share with you the authority that you have, as well as the great job that you do. So that's all I have at this point.
We do not have anyone signed up to speak publicly, but we do have written comments, you guys can refer.
The first one's from Devon and Linda Johnson. My wife and I are formally objecting to the 10-foot variance that the developer is requesting. Our property is located behind this development and are acutely aware of the harm the variance will cause. Ms. Nunez's memorandum to the Board of Zoning Appeals states that after a considerable amount of discussion on the subdivision's requirements for this property, preliminary plat was submitted in June 2021. The town approved this preliminary plat on July 5, 2022. The preliminary subdivision plat was designed to comply with the existing zoning regulations. The developer has indicated that the setbacks in the lot configuration have hampered the style and size of a house on each of the lot. And most importantly, the rate of return is no longer feasible. We appreciate the developer's honesty that it's about the money and the variance will allow them to make more money. The developer would and should have known about his building envelope and any encumbrance before they became a part of this project. The developer then admits in their filing that they're seeking relief for a condition that existed when they purchased the property. The developer states that by granting this relief, it will not be harmful to others. You are looking at doubling the size of houses, see attached attachment. The houses will be twice as large, as stormwater runoff will double the distance between the homes will be closer than they already are. Stacking houses does nothing for the character of the neighborhood other than increasing the developer's rate of return. There will be harm. The town previously was deliberate when they considered and approved the project in 2022. The desire of the applicant rate of return should not carry the day. We do not believe anything should change from the original approved subdivision plat that the town approved in 2022, and again, express our objection to the consideration of this variance application. Next is from Fabian and Sasha Bakshi. Dear zoning board, Ms. Nunez, we are the owners of four Bay Vista Way adjacent to the above lots 1 through 5 of Dreams by the Water, our neighbor, the Johnsons, and we will be directly impacted by this application for variance despite repeated mentions in the agenda documents that either we will not be impacted or be positively affected. We were never contacted about this, nor was our opinion outright sought. We purchased our home in 2018 as a vacation home, and we plan to eventually retire there. The reasons for our choice of this property in Cape Charles included the unique location features of bayfront property with water view stretching as far as the eye can see, including a deeded beach. The quiet and historic town of Cape Charles with well-developed zoning plans and controlled growth to preserve the town's character is a perfect fit for us. We are not fans of busy beach towns that are daily lives as practicing physicians leave us yearning for a quiet getaway location which Cape Charles provides, the absence of two close neighbors leaving us with our sense of space and privacy. We have read the application for variance by Dreams by the Water, and while we are sympathetic to their need to see a return of investment, this should not be at our expense, especially as the property was purchased with the current zoning ordinance in place. A change in the rear setbacks for lots 1 through 5 from 25 to 15 feet will place five large houses that are closely situated, directly adjacent to our two properties. This will undoubtedly have a negative impact on the enjoyment of our properties, contrary to the Dreams by the Water suggestion that this will not reduce, but increase our property value. We believe it will make our homes less sellable and, in fact, decrease their value. There are many beachfront communities that are busy and densely packed. People come to visit and buy in Cape Charles specifically for the opposite experience. The last thing we need are densely packed houses right up against our property, regardless how large and expensive they may be. We specifically object in no uncertain terms to the decrease in the rear setback from 25 feet to 15 feet for lots 1 through 5. This variance will negatively impact our property value and the enjoyment for our homes. Next one's from Peter Alpern of 3 Bay Vista. To whom it may concern, this letter is intended to be read at the April 8, 2025, meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and is regarding the Dreams by the Water subdivision. My wife, Elizabeth, and I own the house at 3 Bay Vista Way and in the Bay Vista Plan Unit Development in Cape Charles, Virginia. The Bay Vista PUD is currently being encroached upon by the Cape Charles Planning Department from the east by a variance requested by Dreams by the Water to reduce the backyard setback by 10 feet and from the west by a ridiculous and inappropriate plan to rezone the Seabreeze Apartments so that they can be fixed and flipped by another developer. On page 2 of the informal discussion memo dated March 4, 2025, regarding the Dreams by the Water subdivision, Katie Nunez notes, "The developer has indicated that the setbacks in the lot configuration have hampered the style and size of a house on each lot, and the rate of return is no longer feasible." It cannot be possible, it cannot possibly be the business of the government. Next one's from John and Antoinette Payne. Unfortunately, we are unable to attend this meeting and hope this email will be read on our behalf. I would like to introduce myself, John, and my wife, Antoinette, as the landowners of Zero Bay Vista Way. We have owned this lot for six years with plans to build our house on the lot. We recently had a site plan prepared by MAS, the Virginia Beach, and we recognize the difficulty of building within the constraints of an approved site plan. Quite frankly, when I saw the original sign for 10 lots on the adjacent property, I had difficulty understanding how this parcel could yield 10 lots. Now, seeing the package for your agenda discussion, I had difficulty understanding how this parcel could... Now, see, I realize most lots are now the minimum size of 5,600 square feet, and not a typical consideration in adjustment of requirements. My lot in the adjoining subdivision is over 9,566 square feet, and quite frankly, with the setbacks, it certainly constrains the design. We therefore request that the discussion to change the setback requirements be rejected as currently proposed. The change of the rear setback from 25 feet to 15 feet in this situation, in my opinion, is inappropriate. The constraints of the cul-de-sac should be reconsidered, and a reduction of the units and/or possible reduction of front setbacks would allow a more appropriate lot size and building envelopes. Thank you for your consideration. Last one's from Nancy and George Proto. This note is in reference to developers and owners' appeal to the zoning board of appeals setback exceptions to the lots on Dreams by the Water development as discussed at the March 11, 2025, BZA meeting. While the setback exemptions being requested would not directly impact us or our property, we are writing to strongly object them. We are frustrated by the town's degree of inconsistency in implying the town building codes, ordinances, approved variances. codes, ordinances, approved variances. We experienced this ourselves on a number of occasions. Exceptions can be given for hardships. There is no hardship that we can determine if this is not granted. We had to get a variance not to have our porch cover the width of our house. It was approved because our lot is very wide. No houses on our block at the time of the request. Subsequently, two new homes were built on Pine Street, which were not required to have porches at all, other than very small landings. Certainly nowhere near the 2/3 or 3/4 or full porch like the town HRBD requires. We would like to we would have liked to have our house wider, but we were told that it needed to align with the house across the street and other homes down Washington because of setback requirements. Consequently, we have a narrow living room, which was necessary to accommodate the other rooms as needed. We were told the hardship argument was not going to fly because the lot was not big enough to build a home. The hardship cannot be a personal one. We were told to build a smaller house. We did. The justification for approving the exceptions given were, one, it's the town's fault for approving the lots. Since the approval has no created hardship, this argument is spacious. It's the developer's fault for not catching it. This cannot be attributed to the town. The town is not responsible for any part of the development. It's the owner's fault because they were not aware when they bought the property. When we bought our lot, we requested the exception before we purchased the lot. It wasn't that difficult to obtain a plot plan with a buildable footprint for our house with setbacks noted. It was the responsibility of the owner to understand any restrictions on development. We do not know. There can be surprises when making such a costly purchase. But to ask for exceptions because they either didn't know or want a bigger house does not seem justifiable. The setbacks are the setbacks, and they exist for a reason. I am hoping that the BZA will not approve just for the asking. Granting an exception for any of these reasons sets a precedent that will weaken the town's ability to control development in the future. All a developer would need to say hereafter is I forgot or I didn't know. Where do you draw the line? This blurs, if not completely eliminates, that line. What if others come before the board for a hardship exception because they want to have a bigger house or no sidewalk or any other personal reason they might have? How do you say yes to some and no to others? People make decisions and on is probably the large investment of our lives based upon town codes and ordinances. To change these ordinances, codes, and laws to accommodate what?
I move to close the public hearing.
A second.
Do you want to offer him further rebuttal? Please. We'll pile that out of your public hearing.
Is he?
Yes. Before you close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad. I would not want you to to listen to or unfortunately to some negative in these letters that is so vastly inaccurate. And I'm sorry that I have to to otherwise present or address a negativity on something that is so very positive. Two glaring inaccuracies that I cannot stress enough. One, there was a very honest miscommunication from someone, I do not know who, but I can assure you it was not me, that made it in the first, not presentation to you, but in one of the initial documents that Katie did, not to be overshadowed by all the great work they've done about it not being financially feasible. I was very, very clear from day one, and I cannot be any clearer. This is not about money. The development is approved. It is approved for a product that can be sold. It is not a product that I would put my name on. Okay? That's just me. The right now, may I approach? This is by width and depth. This is what the development needs itself to. That's what I define. And in my history, I've built about 500 of them. A typical modular structure of 26 by 52. Ironically, even that picture is not allowable because it has a front porch on it. So when I initially tried to purchase a lot for my own residence, not for a profit, and I can't, I'm going to really dwell on that because again, that inaccuracy that made it in those five letters, which really appear to be the summary of one letter, is completely inaccurate. The ability to build a product that I think the town will be proud of, that I'm proud of, is the only way that I can go forward with the development. So when you have homes that are so wide and don't have the depth, it makes it very, very difficult. The second thing was the misconception that they are larger homes. Right now, the footprint is 1,500 square feet times 2 and 1/2 stories, so we can push 4,000 square feet per home under what is currently allowable. With each home being designed 100%, every one of these homes, as I stressed to you before, the plans are done, foundation to ridge pole. The average square footage is 1,900 to 2,100 square feet. It is not my goal, nor the goal of the original developers, to build larger homes. They're already here and rightfully so. Something that was very interesting in one of the letters was a rear yard setback. And again, I apologize that I have to once again, deal with a negativity, but I feel I must explain our side of what was just brought to my attention. You're going to build these huge homes, and they're going to overshadow our homes or be so close. May I approach again? This is a document that you already have. The red depicts the original and approved building envelope. If you look right here, that's the rear yard that abuts the neighbors with the concern.
The Bay Vista.
That's correct. If you will see, the only thing in that setback is porches. We didn't extend the houses any further back. I didn't utilize all of the building envelope as it's implied that we're just going to come in there and build new homes. In addition to that, a point that I brought up previously, and I think Katie touched on, is open space. Most developers, and I've done this my whole life, and that is true, most developers try to maximize lots. I'm retired, and I'm not here for the money, and I'm going to keep saying that. The you do try to maximize space. In this case, we reduced building envelope from what is approved today to what we're requesting, to have homes that are a little bit more in-depth and not as wide. One that I referenced earlier, that we want families to be outside. We want them to live in the neighborhood, not go home to a simple structure merely to reside. So and I will give the opposition, if you would, the benefit of doubt that maybe they did not review all of the previous packages to see the type of homes. And I didn't realize when these were done, that I would have to use them to fight an obstacle. It was to try to portray a positive. But ironically, if you look, it is the exact opposite of what they're saying. That this house is 12 feet from the property lot. It is closer than everything we have. Here, you have a driveway, and you have a vacant lot. These lots, these homes are not backing up to someone else's home and restricting their open space. The one at the end is 5 feet from the side. We're using that as a side yard setback. Look at the distance of those two. In terms of, I think, one of the, and I can address each of those concerns. I don't know that that's that productive. One that referenced, they want an unstructured view of the bay. Well, guess what? This is not the side that views the bay. In terms of property value, I realize that is a judgment. But would this community right now bring more value to the town and to this community than what could be done under the current regulations? I think that's a no-brainer. I don't like, nothing at all, but I accorded the previous presenter, you know, the common sense sounds a bit condescending. It's what really is the right thing. And from the very beginning, five months ago, when we undertook these changes, it was to do the right thing and make a much nicer development that truly, in my opinion, does not have a negative impact on anyone. I just don't see that, and I realize that we could differ. So when I take the, and I'm being redundant, I'm sorry I have to deal with the negativity. I don't see any negative to the five individuals that appeared to write one letter. I don't see it. And I clearly don't see it to the other hundreds of people that did not present any negativity.
I'm going to have you wrap your hearing about a time zone.
Very good. And thank you again.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Have a motion to close the open.
I do have some questions. Katie, the process for replating the development, it has to be under the ownership of all the lots would have to be owned by the same entity? Is that correct?
Two of the lots have been sold out to a different entity. Yes, different individuals.
So in order for that to occur, Dreams by the Water would have to regain ownership of those two lots that were sold.
I do not view that as a viable option at this time.
I'm just wondering about thinking through the logistics of how that development could be replatted, if at all.
I do not view that as a viable option at this time.
I understand. I'm just processing the logistics of the feasibility of that. In the presentation last month, you mentioned you would be contacting the neighbors. Did anyone reach out to the neighbors?
Ma'am, I don't did not say, I don't believe I said I would contact the neighbors. And I will tell you that maybe if that is an oversight, I take full responsibility. The reason I did not contact the neighbors was the two affected neighbors are actually much closer and under the guidelines of a PUD, you know, have far more flexibility and rights than what we had. So they actually have quite a bit more than what we're asking for. So at my oversight, I didn't think they would object, to be honest with you.
The town did provide letters to the adjacent property owners notification of this public hearing as required by law.
I'm curious more about the runoff that you mentioned, the stormwater runoff, particularly with the white house behind the two lots on the left. Are you able to speak to that at all about what that would end up being in this scenario?
Katie, may I also help you address that?
Sure. Hang on. There's actually no development on any particular lot that's before the town for consideration, review, or issuance of a permit. So I cannot comment on how we would address the stormwater until we actually get a development plan per lot, based upon the size of the house, what driveway is proposed, the materials being proposed for the driveway itself, any of the other hardscaping surfaces, impervious impervious surfaces. So I cannot provide you that comment. I can just tell you what state law requires.
Okay.
Okay? Sorry, Chris.
No, no, no. May I also help address that, please? Because that's my background, and that we are held under a much, I think, a much higher standard with Maryland purple areas. So what would actually be extremely difficult with the current approved lots is the 10-foot between the two homes. You'd have to swale that. We have actually made the side yard setbacks much larger, which would be much easier to swale those in accordance, and by making them squared off, we have room for rain gardens. So it's actually much easier for us to comply with any stormwater runoff than what's already there. So the architects, engineers that I have had look at this actually have addressed it through completion to make it, I'm not going to say easier, but much more palatable to all the guidelines already.
Those all your questions, please?
They'd be required to have sidewalks?
Say it again.
They'd be required to have a sidewalks with the variance?
Yes.
Okay.
So I do have a question on this from Katie. It said, one of the letters that they read, it talked about the Bay Vista PUD. There is a Bay Vista PUD?
Bay Vista is part of the Acamack Plantation PUD.
Okay.
I know this is a total disbelief in this community. It is part of the Acamack Plantation PUD.
So you're telling me they are they are part of Bay Creek?
Yes, they are part of that PUD document. They now is part of the Bay Creek Homeowners Association. They actually have their own homeowners association called Bay Vista Homeowners Association. Whether they have ever been formed and set up due, I have no idea. They are contained in the deed description in the Acamack Plantation PUD.
Interesting. It's a lot of queries, I'm sure.
So I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion so that we can have a further, oh, discussion here?
So you, please, all, all 10, is it all 10?
All 10 together. Mm-hmm. I don't know if you want to do this as discussion, but I'm ready. I'm ready to make a motion.
Go for it.
Just according to my ability as a BZA member, looking at what when a variance is requested, a variance is really only supposed to be honored when it is an actual hardship for the landowner, or in this case, if you own all of them, the developer, that was not created by themselves. And I feel my motion would be to deny this variance because I feel that this is not a hardship, a hardship that wasn't created by yourself by purchasing the land as it is and knowing the plots. So that's my motion.
So if I want a second motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Any comments? Could I have a vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion fails. So let's start again.
Well, you can vote.
I did vote.
You did. You voted yea.
No.
Two nay. It's two to two.
So we're back to looking for another motion. The I think we're treating all the all 10 lots as one. So whatever whatever motion of belief we grant or do not grant would pertain to all 10 lots, correct?
Yes.
I want to call attention to the two lots that have been sold are on the bottom right and the third one up on the right. Right? And a lot of the property owners who have come in opposition are neighboring on the left side. So I just, I want to bring that up because it seems like there's some middle ground to be found here, given the neighboring of the two developments.
So just to clarify so everyone knows, I think you're referencing in these lots 8 and 10, that is on the east side, adjacent to the stormwater pond for Bay Creek.
East side, yeah.
Because the developer still owns all of the other ones and in theory, has the ability to vacate lot lines?
That may be a possibility. Again, I don't think that it'll actually correct the issue with the rear setback and front setback issues on this parcel, on any of the parcels if they should be even vacate lot lines.
Because the lots are still conforming lots based on their square footage, their 5,600.
It's just a front and rear setbacks.
Well, in some ways, it wasn't, the hardship wasn't created by them because that was the road that was there when it was the Coast Guard station, and they had to upgrade it to VDOT.
There was a parking lot when it was the Coast Guard. There was a parking lot when it was the Coast Guard housing and yes, when they purchased the property, it required them to upgrade to meet our subdivision standards, which does a requirement that it needs to be a road acceptable to VDOT for acceptance into their secondary road system. Yes.
May I ask a question of the board?
Sure.
Is that permissible?
I, I like your term compromise. I don't know if it's within the realm of this meeting. Can we discuss a compromise? And would they be able to potentially reevaluate that vote if there was a compromise? I'm asking where I don't, I don't-
We would make as many motions-
We would make another motion.
They want to some in passing.
This is an assumption, so I hope you don't mind if I think out loud with you. Would it be more toward a goal of that compromise if you slash we can give something to those property owners to the west on the left side? As an example, the rear yard setback, if we did not request the rear yard setback to the affected properties? And that way, this board, I think then, could send the message that obviously you do want to recognize when people show concerns. At the same time, hopefully, the compromise to us is that I still believe we're bringing something to the table that's well worth merit. So the 10-foot setback that would be, that I have requested on lots one, two, and three are actually my lots. If I was to concede to not require that setback, or request that setback, I'm sorry, and redesign those three homes without that setback, would that get us closer to a positive vote in a compromise? Thank you.
Well, I guess the question would be what compromising, what-
You said that you're not going to give up the 10-foot.
Yeah, no, I mean, in terms of what kind of compromise we're, we're considering, just the setback?
Just those three lots?
That would be the three that adjoin. I think the person, even though they are actually only 12 feet from the line, if, if, and I'm sorry, they're not here, if they were here and we said, okay, then we don't, we won't request that setback, we go with the setback that's currently in the code, there would be very little that person could say. So absent that person, I'm asking of the board, do you feel that that's a compromise in your decision to say, okay, there's been an objection raised, that objection is now being taken care of for the affected property owner, which time I don't see that we have any objections.
And who is the owner, is lot four privately owned? Or that is yours as well?
Lot four is, lot four is a pie-shaped lot that really has to have that. That's one of the more affected lots. But if you look at lot four, it's actually to the driveway side of that property. So it's not like they're, let's say, abutting right up to that house. But I can speak for one, two, and three.
And so five and six are also asking for the rear setback, even though the houses are going to be facing the, the rear is going to be facing like the bayside or beachside or whatever you want to call it.
But the cul-de-sac was probably the most affected by the street and that's why we tried to make them all uniform. And once you take, cut a little bit of that pie expression, pardon expression, it really had a dramatic effect on everything. So the square lots, and I'm doing this off the cuff, and as I said, I, you know, I like the term compromise.
And so that would leave the lots on the right side, yeah, which would still have the, it would just be those four lots that we, that would require the variance. And we'd still have a front yard setback. They'd also need a front yard setback.
Yeah.
Variants.
That's correct. And the front yard setback, we, we dealt with completely differently. And the main summary of that was, was an easement that we kind of were mandated.
The setback in the-
We're still 30 feet from the street. So that, and I think in all intent and purposes, meets the intent of the code, doesn't affect anybody.
So which, so the compromise concerns lots one, two, and three? One, two, and three?
Those are the ones that he's mentioned. But there's still a, a property at four Bay vistas that is affected by lots four and five. I mean, the rendering looks great, but to Katie's point, there's no application for a building permit. So there's nothing that can guarantee legally that that rendering is what you would use.
That's unique, isn't it such an odd feature?
So I mean, if, looking at that, if you, if you imposed the rear setback on lot four, it would be like this. It would be, you could almost have to be it like that because, just because of the way that lots laid out.
See, lot four, because of this, I'll show you in a second. Because of this pie, lot four, that's really all the store on lot four and over here on the lot across. So they really do need it on lot four. Here, basically what I'm doing is just foregoing those back decks. And that would be your original, you know, setback that's currently allowable.
Well, on the Bay Vista, their backyard setback doesn't seem very deep either. I know even though it's part of the PUD.
Right.
Part of the PUD.
Yeah. So I just find it ironic that they're complaining about the rear setback when they're, they're sort of just challenged.
And that's why, as I said earlier, that's why I didn't reach out to them. It was not to be made really, I thought they'd be the last people to have a concern. But I do understand what you're trying, I think what you're trying to accomplish is you want to try to, to the extent all of us like to, is try to keep everybody happy. And I appreciate that.
Just for clarity, we're talking about lots one, two, and three. The compromise is?
No setback, no variance.
No variance, your question of rear setback.
So as I understood, and Katie, please help me. The, we made this one hearing assuming that all 10 lots would be impacted the same. But with it being 10 individual applications, then we could separate those. So what I'm asking is if, if lots one, two, and three, I no longer requested a rear yard setback, I have to follow the setback that's currently approved, would the board be more amicable to grant the remaining setbacks as presented?
I'm still confused-
Yes, ma'am?
About the, are you, I know you're representing a different entity as the agent, but you're saying you own these three lots?
I'm contract purchaser for, there's four lots in addition to possibly the fifth. So I have interest in, personal interest in half of the development. But I have the other property owners and two of your original developers here with me. We have since then, I would use this term very openly, we've become friends and family. We all have the best interest, which is why I think most of it, your background working with builder, the probability of having all 10 people in agreement and being able to design 10 different homes. That's how close and committed we are to this. These homes are done.
Sure. I'm just wondering, are, do you also have a vested interest in lot four?
I do not. I just want to be the original developers of one of the four. He is not here. But I do have an interest to try to, I say, represent his best interest in all the individuals, including the folks that are here that give me that. And that's also part of the package that they designed that I could represent them. And that lot four, without a, without really, you know, the forbearance of existing setback is tough to work with. It really is. And where it actually has, I think, reasonably low or no impact on the community when their home is within a 10-foot setback.
But that's a side setback on this, on this, on that property there?
That's correct.
That's a side setback, it's not, it's not a back setback, it's a five-yard, five, five-foot setbacks? I don't know what the setback is on the side for that.
For Bay Vista, I think, I think they're five feet.
So, I mean, he's got five feet of his property line versus 15, 15 feet. So.
And I have a question on the procedure. If, if we were to look at each individual lot variance separately, do we have to, would they have to reapply and start this all over individually or, no?
They have actually applied individually. We just took the public hearing component, meaning the testimony received.
Okay.
So if you can take individual votes at this point, if you felt your vote was going to be consistent across all 10 applications, you can take that and we would assign it to all 10 applications. It's your call now how you wish to take your votes.
Okay.
Sounds like we need to have an individual.
Well, we could probably do the, the one, two, and three as one vote. They're the ones that have no rear setback.
That's the ones he's willing to compromise on, but-
Then the others? We're just trying to decide how to-
No, no, sure. And would you mind the, where the, the two remaining primary owners are here, would it be okay if I take them outside and speak to them? I want to make sure they understand what we're doing. Would that be okay?
Look at like a five-minute recess for you to do that?
Would that be okay? Very good. Thank you. Pretty good? Thank you very much. I do have the authority that I discussed earlier, but it's not my nature to do things without making sure that we have a good consensus. And we do have represented today all 10 lot owners, they're 100% in agreement that compromise is always on the table. So in this case, the compromise is three of my lots. So bit of an irony there. So, but I think it's, hopefully, you will agree that that's fair and that might get us to where we need to be. So thank you, thank you for your patience.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion. How do I word this? I would like to move that we separate the right half of the development from the left half of the development in our procedure and table the left half of the development for a later meeting where the compromise can be discussed with the interested neighboring property owners before coming to the board and give the adjacent property owners the opportunity to speak on the compromise before we vote on anything.
So specifically, you are making a motion to table variance 2025-02 through variance 2025-06. Those are the applications.
I'm sorry, I can hear a word for it.
And specifically, it is to consult with adjacent property owners and inform them of the proposed compromise to three of those five lots of the removal of the rear yard setback and obtain their position on said compromise. I think that's your proposed motion.
I'm, the three, the three lots were proposed by the applicant as his idea of a compromise? I don't know what the-
I understand, I just want to make sure I've captured your motion correctly.
Sure, okay.
I'm sorry, can you repeat those numbers, the-
Sure, variance 2025-02.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Variance 2025-06, which is lots one through five.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So we have a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So that's half of the development. The remaining five lots are looking for, to make sure I'm correct, granted relief, they're seeking the 10-foot setback for the front and back, correct?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, could I call up the number?
I'll make a motion, just a second.
These are the numbers.
Now you go, seven through 11.
Yeah, well, let me just-
Pull it out.
Trying to. So I make a motion to approve VAR 2025-07 through VAR 2025-11 in consideration of, of the ordinance criteria for variances being met.
Any a second?
Have a second? I'll second. Any further discussion? None?
Can I ask a quick question? I have two Bay vistas. And I know Fabian is the, I believe that he's four, I believe. Is he four? The, the lot that's beside me, is he four?
Four.
One, two, and three.
Yes.
Sure.
I'm here, here, here.
Sure, and all of these are just a table.
Okay.
Okay? So we're now discussing these on the side.
Okay.
Okay?
So we have-
So all those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So that doesn't, that motion doesn't carry? So what, how would, since you were opposed to the relief that was requested, granting that relief that was requested, how would you change the relief question? Because we're not talking about meeting with the adjacent property owners to discuss it because it's-
They're on adjacent property owners here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just not, I would like to discuss further the, the criteria for the variance and how we're assessing that this has met the criteria as a board.
I can't hear, at least you have to talk in, sorry.
I would like to address the criteria of the variance as a board before voting to make sure I better understand that we've met the criteria.
So are you looking to adjourn this?
Do that now? Do you want to table this or you want to talk now?
Discuss it now.
I, I would like to hear from other members of the board in, in how you all are viewing the criteria being met.
Well, I thought that the, for myself, I thought that the, the staff report kind of laid that all out and I agree with what, what they said, that the hardship, I thought they meant the hardship because what was it totally created by them, this group, when they, they purchased the property? The impact, the need, it's not the negative impact. I think that they're creating their own subdivision, their own village, kind of unique, which I think fits in with the historic district and the town of Cape Charles. So I thought they had met the criteria. I thought that the staff, the staff reported it accurately. I was in agreement with them.
I guess, I guess the part that's still confusing to me, I'm just trying to fully understand, is the lots have not been sold and the lots were platted by the original developer and are still in possession from that developer?
So lots number, let me see, 10 and 8 have actually conveyed.
So?
Those two individuals were not aware that the restrictions that are in place would impact the, the home that they're building. So in fact, I think that- So in fact, I think that really, individually, I think they really probably would have a true hardship-based case because they have conveyed and did not have a knowledge of the issues that have since come forward. The other lots, at least two of those, the original developers, they're the lots on the end, wish to retain.
So backing up quickly.
Yes, ma'am.
The two lots that have been sold, the realtor did not convey the building envelope to the buyer?
Ma'am, that I don't know. I, I can't comment on that.
I'm just trying to understand how they wouldn't know that when buying the lot.
I, I have every belief in my dealings with those individuals because I have designed the homes to go on those lots, that they did not have knowledge of the restrictions that were in place. And, but also, I'm, I'm definitely one of these persons, I go forward, not backwards. We know that an error took place. And as I, as I keep saying, the error was not realizing that there was going to be a fifty-foot V-dot road through the middle of this plat. And at this point, that can't be changed. It's all done. That was not in the adjacent PUD of the individuals that have the concern. Hence, they picked up the very depth that we're desiring. I'm really just asking for a little more than what we have, which is, at the same time, a little bit, you know, less than what they already have.
Okay.
It's the road.
I, I have a, I probably shouldn't have taken this, the BZA training I just took because it was very, to me, very black and white what created a hardship and what didn't. Now, so when you just said that, I kind of had an idea of, right now, you're applying for variances to the front and the back. Now, I know that this, this was sold with buildable lots on it. But then the V-dot road came in. So my thinking is this, it might be two different variances that you might want to separate them into, if that's possible, because I can see where that V-dot road being built was not, you couldn't perceive that. But then people buying the lot, or you buying the subdivision to build, knew what the setbacks were. Or you had the due diligence to find out beforehand. If you're buying a house, you, you as the buyer needs to do the due diligence, whether the realtor tells you or not. So my question is this, can we separate this into two separate variance applications? One for the front setback versus the back setback? Because I'm seeing where this.
So yes, in every application before you, the five that we are still trying to debate a motion on, you can vote some, all, or none of their requests.
Okay.
So you can approve the front setback, change the front setback, approve the rear setback, change the rear setback, approve none of it, approve all of it. It is your call to make.
Okay, so then I, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. I'm going to try to keep this kind of clear. So my, my, can I see those numbers again? So my motion would be to approve the front setbacks for all ten applications.
You've already tabled five of the applications.
Okay, okay, okay. So then we'll just, never mind. Okay, so we'll do the other five. So that is.
And for clarification, Laura, the, the remaining eight are still owned by the developer who had this platted, correct?
You have already tabled five of these applications.
Right, so I forgot about that.
Well, for semantical reasons, the remaining three.
So we are now dealing with.
Five. Oh, seven to eleven.
The other five, two we've established have been sold.
Right.
To a buyer who may or may not have been aware. And the remaining three are still owned by the developer who had these lots platted and knew about development regulations presumably.
After speaking with the surveyors, the engineers, one of the agents that was involved, I don't believe that the original developers were aware of the restrictions of these setbacks. Now, one could argue all day long that maybe they should have been. I trust them and believe them when they tell me they did not.
I know, but when we're talking about a hardship, my question is, is that the developer that still owns these lots?
Today, I, I have the interest in those lots. And I, and obviously, you know, I'm here to present what I think is the better option of these lots.
So to answer the question, from a tax map standpoint, the owner of the lots is the developer who had them platted?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I make the motion for variance 2025-07 through dash eleven to approve the variance, the ten-foot variance for the front setbacks and in retrospect, also deny the back setbacks on those same variances. That's my motion.
But the backyard setback is what, twenty feet? Fifteen feet, so.
No, it's twenty, it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five feet, they want ten of that.
So they still wouldn't, with the twenty-five-foot backyard setback, what could you build on it?
Well, that's just my thinking because the V-dot road was built after.
So again, I don't mean, I, I have a motion, I don't have a second yet. You're already debated already.
I need to hear the motion again, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So it's variance 2025-7 through 11 to approve the front setback variance of ten, ten feet and to deny the rear yard setback variance request of ten feet.
About a second? No second? A motion dies.
Was that clear to everyone else, my question leading up to this?
I mean, the question about.
About the ownership?
The ownership of the lots?
I don't think it, personally, I don't think it really matters who owns the lots. It's, it's whoever owns a lot should, I feel, should have done their own due diligence to make sure they knew what the buildable space was, what the, all the setbacks were.
I guess to Chairwoman, when, when we were talking about it in your explanation of a hardship, I felt like the new information, well, I guess not necessarily new, the clarification I received would not be in line with your explanation of a hardship.
No, I didn't think the ownership made any difference. The current ownership didn't make any difference. So I guess the question is, the, what do we do with the, we've tabled five of the lots, the decision on the five of the lots, so we still have five left to determine their fate, so to speak, so.
Can we do discussion now amongst us? So my, my theory with what I proposed was because this V-dot road was built afterwards. They had already purchased this, it had already been plotted as is, so they knew what setbacks were here. That was, that was, now that they're looking for setback, that would be, they're asking for a variance that I feel is not a hardship because they knew what it was, or if they didn't, they should have known. Now, this V-dot streak coming in created wider than they thought it was going to be in the original plat. That's where I'm feeling we should give allowance for because, in the front, because that was not their.
I guess I'm thinking that giving them the backyard setback relief doesn't really help them without having the backyard relief also.
Well, I just, I just see that as not being at their, their fault, you know, because that came in later after they already.
Well, it greatly decreased the depth of the lot, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's just why I tried to propose that, but.
Is, is we're hopefully all trying to think through this and look at a solution. I'm asking the question, I, I can't make that offering, but if, following your analogy, which I don't disagree with, at the same time, trying, I think, to yield to those that want to make this concession to the adjoining community. And if there is an ability to redo those five that were tabled, would the board be in agreement to give the front yard concession to all lots? If, if I hear what you say, but not the rear yards?
That's what she said.
Yes, I would.
Right, I was asking, but, and Katie, could that also include the ones that were tabled? And does the board have an appetite to allow all of us to move forward with a front yard variance for the reasons that you said, but without the rear yard, which I really think is, is more of a compromise, but would be something to those, to the other community because they really don't have, I don't think, any real justification to the front yard. But I'm with you, we have to look at what other people think. Does the board have an appetite in granting the variance for all ten lots to the front yard setback, but not the rear yard?
I would be in agreement with that. I don't know how to untable.
So procedurally, I mean, we want it procedurally.
Okay.
So in order to consider the first six, the first five lots that we've already tabled, we need a motion to take that off the table.
Okay.
And then we send that motion and then start.
Okay. Got it. So I make a motion to untable.
To, to take it off the table.
Take the, okay, take it off the table.
Take it off the table, stop there. So we want to take that motion off the table.
Second.
Is there a second?
Before you pay. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so now, all the lots are back in place. Here we go.
So I make a motion to grant on all lots from VAR 2025-02 through dash eleven to grant the variance, the, the front yard setback and to deny the variance of the backyard setbacks on all.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
I guess we got somewhere.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
That's exactly why I want to move to Cape Charles. Thank you.
There is no other items for this.
Just a correction of the number.
Is that actually a meeting going to happen during the meeting?
Say that again?
Do we have, do we have something for May?
It should be Tuesday, the thirteenth.
Actually, we have, we proceed no application, but our deadline is this coming Friday. I can't put the.
Okay, it's the thirteenth, not the.
I'm going to cross street.
No, please, this is, but I have a motion to adjourn.
So, I motion re-adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.